Mayor Pro Tim will be joining us shortly, but we do have a quorum. And good morning. We've got a long day ahead of us. We've got a great day ahead of us. This is the Ethics Workshop that we have scheduled from 10:00 in the morning until noon. It is February 16th. Without further ado, make sure we have plenty of opportunity for everybody to comment, and we have plenty of opportunity for discussion. Let's go ahead and open it up. Mr. Chairman, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, thank you for joining us. Mr. Executive Director, thanks for joining us. Any opening comments, Carlos?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city staff, members of public, thank you for this opportunity to present our recommendations to this board. These recommendations came from deliberations from the Board of Monty Deliberation, also taking input from the citizens as well. And we look forward to presenting these recommendations, discussing them with you, and seeing how we can move forward to continue to strengthen our ethics code here in the City of Tallahassee.
Can you please speak into the mic?
Oh, there we go.
All right.
Better.
Thank you.
That was such a good speech. Okay.
And colleagues, I'm sure you know, but for the members of the public, Mr. Carlos Ray is the volunteer chair of the Tallahassee Ethics Board, and thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Floyd, any opening comments or anything?
No.
Excellent. I'm going to need you to also pull your microphone down for when time comes. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, but you'll recall at your October 27 meeting, Mr. Floyd provided the annual report from the Ethics Board, and the City Commission discussed its desire to have this workshop. So Mr. Floyd and I worked together to put this together, and you've got the chairman who's made comments, and the Ethics Officer, as well as Mr. Reed, the attorney for the Ethics Board. So we look forward to your feedback. The agenda material that you have has a list of recommendations that the Ethics Board has forwarded you, and I know Mr. Ray has a presentation to share the background and the thought process there. So we look forward to the discussion.
Excellent. Madam Attorney?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We have been working very diligently with the Ethics Officer and trying to make sure that everything that has been approved by this commission is followed through with, and it has been a pleasure to work with each one of these individuals.
Excellent. Excellent. Mr. Inspector General?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make it clear upfront that for matters that do not involve the Inspector General's office directly, any comments they make are for an advisory-type capacity, not in support or against any of these proposals.
Excellent. We've got the Treasury Clerk here to help us stay in order with public speakers. Mr. Reed, any opening comments? We'll make sure everybody's got an opportunity.
I was able to hear the chairman. He covered it all.
Excellent. 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 Colleagues, any opening comments before we move forward?
Let's go.
All right. What I'd like to do is go ahead and hear from the public first. Let's get all the public comment, give everybody the opportunity to weigh in. From there, I have asked the Chair of the Ethics Board to provide a presentation on the recommendations that they have sent to us for consideration, and then literally, I want to hear from all of our professional staff. I want to hear from the attorney and the executive director from the Ethics Board. I want to hear from our attorney, our city manager, and Inspector General. And then we're going to have a great conversation. We'll see where this goes. Don't want to leave anybody out. Are we all on the same page? Excellent. All right. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have this morning on the workshop?
We have five individuals who have turned in a speaker card. If there's anyone who wishes to speak but has not done so, those are available on the table just outside the doors to chambers.
Excellent. Well, let's go ahead and get ourselves started.
Our first speaker will be Peter Butzine. He and other speakers will have three minutes for remarks. We would appreciate it if you'd give us your name and address for the record, and I will give you a heads-up when you're at about two and a half minutes coming in on your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Peter Butzine. I reside at 1628 Woodgate Way, and I'm a volunteer for Citizens for Ethics Reform, which includes Common Cause, the Legal Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Florida Tea Party Network, and Integrity Florida. And all of us from those organizations will be speaking before you this morning. I strongly support the recommendations from the Independent Ethics Board to reform Tallahassee's notoriously weak lobby registration and disclosure ordinance. Professional lobbyists can easily dodge the current ordinance by saying that they are consultants who don't fall under the definition of lobbyist. I also encourage you to empower the Ethics Board with the ability to extend whistleblower protections to city employees who bring ethics complaints against city commissioners and officers. While the Inspector General can offer whistleblower protections, unlike the Independent Ethics Board, the Inspector General is not independent of the city commission. And some of you have opposed non-sworn complaints over the years. Well, one of the best ways to ensure that complaints are indeed sworn is to provide whistleblower protections to city employees so that they don't face retribution. Last, I believe that the majority of this commission erred in its last meeting when it supported the city attorney's deeply flawed opinion that the Ethics Board does not have jurisdiction over city commissioners serving ex officio on inter-local agencies, specifically CRA and Blueprint. It's only common sense that in 2014, when 67% of Tallahassee voters passed the charter amendment, they expected that city employees and officials, including its commissioners and officers, would fall under the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board, including commissioners' service on CRA and Blueprint. It doesn't take a lawyer to draw this conclusion, although both John Reed for the Independent Ethics Board and Richard Herring on our coalition, and also his former chair, have made strong legal cases supporting this position. After the Ethics Board's disposition of a recent complaint against the mayor for his actions on Blueprint, the city reimbursed Mr. Daley for his legal expenses incurred in its dismissal. Well, if the city and not Blueprint is responsible for paying legal fees, certainly, the Independent Ethics Board has jurisdiction over commissioners' ex-official membership on CRA and Blueprint.
You're at two and a half.
To its credit, the city commission significantly reformed Tallahassee's ethics ordinances a couple of years ago, and I urge you now to complement those reforms by passing the recommendations from the Independent Ethics Board. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, it was not Blueprint, it was CRA.
Thank you. CRA.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson.
Dr. Jackson, thank you for joining us.
Thanks very much.
The next speaker would be Marilyn Wills, just to get them queued up.
And we can take this off now?
Sure.
We're speaking. On July 14, 2021, Gary Jordan, a lobbyist registered by the city, television spokesperson for WCTV, a paid contributor for Tallahassee Democrat, a recognized leader in the Tallahassee Chamber, and a member of Scott Maddox's crime family, admitted under oath in a criminal trial that he actively conspired to extort money from a local business, attempted to hide these illegal acts and funds from which ended up in the pocket of Scott Maddox. Scott, who is currently in prison, thankfully, will be able, when he gets out of prison, to return to Tallahassee, pay his $25 to be a lobbyist, and go back to his previous crimes. We need to do a couple of things. We need to have some minimum legal standards. If you have a criminal record, you shouldn't be able to pay $25 and be a lobbyist. If you admit to a felony under oath in a criminal setting, you shouldn't, they should not, this body, we should have an ordinance that does not allow you to become a lobbyist. The registration fee is $25, which is a joke. They're talking 20, 30, 50, $200,000. Charge $500, run the background check, do the investigation before we even let them. It's an important position to be lobbyist. That's one thing. A second thing, and I'm going to give you a list of 14 others that I won't be able to get through, we need to increase, change the definition of lobbyist, and we need to expand it. So a lobbyist would be defined as anyone who's hired to influence a commissioner's view. Okay? So that could be, don't tell me, oh, well, he's my management consultant, he's my grooming consultant, he just meets with me, he's that, 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 that. No. If you're in a paid position to influence, try to influence an elected official, then you're a lobbyist, and you have to meet these other standards. Regarding the CRA, Blueprint, and are we, are city commissioners responsible to act ethically when they're on some other board?
You're at two and a half minutes.
Thank you. The bottom line on that, I think they asked the wrong question. If you're, we don't care about the other board members on CRA, but we do the city commissions. If you're a city commissioner or a mayor, then you're responsible to follow the ethics ordinance in any capacity. If you're asked as a mayor to judge my little Finley's fifth-grade class drawings, you better be ethical in that board. Anytime you're acting as a mayor or city commissioner, it's just ridiculous that after 10, 11 years, we're still talking about this. It's disappointing. Thank you very much, and I'll send you each a copy of the 14 now.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
You bet.
Our next speaker.
Marilyn Wills. And then Ben Wilcox.
Mr. Wills, thank you for joining us.
Marilyn Wills, 2326 Kilkeny Drive West, Tallahassee. At its December meeting, the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board discussed the possibility of handling whistleblower complaints. At this time, all such complaints must be handled by the Office of the Inspector General, who has the sole ability to grant an employee whistleblower protection. Whistleblower complaints must be brought to the, quote, "appropriate local official", unquote, a term not defined by the whistleblower statute. In Palm Beach County, both the Inspector General and the Ethics Commission were designated by the county commission to serve as the appropriate local official. This is appropriate under state statute. Citizens for Ethics Reform supports the Ethics Board in this endeavor and urges the city commission to extend the ability to offer whistleblower protections to the Independent Ethics Board. Only the Ethics Board is truly independent, and therefore, it's appropriate that it should be able to grant whistleblower protections. Without such protection, city employees will be reluctant to call out ethics violations for fear of termination, demotion, or retribution.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Ben Wilcox. And then Richard Herring.
Mr. Wilcox, thanks for joining us. You name an address, please, for the record.
Ben Wilcox, 1719 Old Fort Drive. Good morning, Mayor and Commission members. I want to talk about the lobby reform proposals that the Independent Ethics Board is recommending to the City Commission for this workshop. At the heart of it is rewriting the definitions of lobbyists and lobbying currently in our city ordinance. In January 2020, the Tallahassee Democrat had a series of reports that detailed how lobbyists were working behind the scenes in city government and were refusing to register as lobbyists with the city, even though they were doing all the things a lobbyist does. They were claiming to be consultants or communications experts. Remember that if you register to look as a lobbyist, you have to disclose who your clients are. That's likely the real reason they don't want to register. Last summer's federal corruption trial exposed how one unregistered lobbyist was working to win favorable public policy for his clients. This ghost lobbyist was also working to get certain people appointed to important city jobs, and yet the city commission has done nothing to address this black eye on city government. What message does this send to the lobbyists who do the right thing and register with the city and disclose their clients? It's made worse because these ghost lobbyists also tend to be players in the financing of campaigns. They raise money for their preferred candidates, and then they become ghost lobbyists for the donors. So as the charter requires, the Independent Ethics Board is recommending ordinances and charter amendments to the city commission. After seeing the reports about what I'm calling ghost lobbyists, the Ethics Board went to work on a proposed ordinance to rewrite the definition of lobbyists and lobbying so that it better captures these ghost lobbyists. The current lobby registration requirement for city government is a joke. It's got a huge built-in loophole that allows these ghost lobbyists to work behind the scenes, influencing city policy for their clients. Lobbyists should not get to decide whether they want to register or not, but that's what we have with our current lobby registration requirement. The current lobby definition are what has been described by the Ethics Board as circular. Essentially, it says you're a lobbyist if you lobby. It leaves the door open for someone to say, I'm not a lobbyist because I don't lobby. I consult. I communicate. The new proposed definitions would close that loophole by better describing the conduct that is associated with lobbying.
You're at two and a half minutes.
I don't blame you, the current city commission, for putting such weak lobby registration requirements in place. It was done under a previous commission, but I will blame this commission if you don't fix it by closing the lobby registration loophole and adopting the new proposed definitions. I would also say that we support our Coalition System for Ethics Reform supports the other aspects of the recommendations by the Independent Ethics Board when it comes to lobbying.
You're at three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wilcox, you can finish your thought. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I would just say it's been more than two years since the Tallahassee Democrat exposed these ghost lobbyists. My question is, do you just not care? Do you just not care that our city has a reputation for pay-to-play corruption? Are you so invested in business as usual? I guess we'll find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Herring, thanks for joining us. Dr. Herring, excuse me.
Not Dr.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Herring. Name and address for the record, please. Richard Herring, 1110 Ivanhoe Road. We all know that it does, I want to talk about the CRA and Blueprint. We all know that it doesn't say anywhere that the Independent Ethics Board has or doesn't have jurisdiction over the boards of Blueprint and the CRA. The coalitions are on record as agreeing with the conclusions of the Ethics Board attorney and disagreeing with the conclusions of the city attorney. The city charter sets the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board with two requirements. First, ethics has to cover city officials and others. And second, ethics has to cover city boards, councils, and commissions. A city official doesn't have to serve on a city board to be covered. Florida statutes permit local governments to create entities like Blueprint and CRA, and the Florida statutes say that those are separate legal entities. But an elected official serving on the city commission and on Blueprint and the CRA boards still holds only one public office. The Florida Constitution specifically says, no person shall hold at the same time more than one office under the government of the state and the counties and the municipalities. It is a single office. The Attorney General in 9704 said, "A city commissioner cannot also serve as a commissioner of a CRA unless the city commission declares itself to be the governing body of the CRA." They're one and the same thing, the position in terms of the elected official. Serving on the board of Blueprint and the CRA is simply part of your job as a city commissioner. In 9816, the Attorney General concluded that although a community redevelopment agency is a separate entity from a city commission, the city commission's service as the governing body of the agency is viewed as, this is a quote, "as an addition to the existing duties of the city commission." And then in 8960, the Attorney General said, "The two positions, the CRA and the city commission, work in tandem to be a member of the city council entails being a member of the Board of Commissioners of the redevelopment agency." So I see a unity there that is difficult to get away from in order to avoid dual office holding under the Constitution, which would mean you have to resign from one or the other. The coalition believes the intent of the voters should control, and the voter, and we believe that the voters believed in 2014 that ethics would apply whenever a city commissioner is performing the requirements of their elected offices. This ought to apply to Blueprint and to the CRA and to any board that the city may create in the future, and by making that decision, you would avoid going through this whole discussion again and again and again.
You're at two and a half.
Thank you. We want to applaud positions taken by several of our city officials. Mayor Daley's on record that he believes the city ethics code applies to city commissioners while they serve on Blueprint and the CRA boards, and Commissioners Matlow and Porter have supported amending the city charter to clearly state the Ethics Board's position. The voters of Tallahassee amended the charter to require an ethics code that applies to our elected city officials. Since then, those same voters have elected our current city commission to perform their public duties, including, as those voters well-knew when they voted, serving on the boards of Blueprint and the CRA.
You're at three minutes.
We would suggest honoring this intent of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I have no further speakers.
All right. Do we have anybody else here that is interested in speaking at the workshop today? Anybody else? Want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. Do we have anybody online, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir, Mayor. We had no one registered to speak online, so we are all in person today.
Excellent. Wonderful. Mr. Chairman, what I'd love for you to do is walk us through your presentation.
Of course.
I want your team to have plenty of opportunity to comment above and beyond your presentation. We're going to have the city appointments also comment on all the proposals, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Carlos Ray. As the mayor mentioned, I am a volunteer member of the Ethics Board that was established in 2014.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt? Do you have other members of your board that are present that you would like to introduce?
That's what I was going, may I trans? At this time, I want to represent, present the other members of the board who serve with me as volunteers. Our vice chairman is Brian Smith, who was appointed by FAMU. Ernie Payne, who was appointed by the City of Tallahassee. Ruby Barr, who was appointed by Public Defender. Robin Blank, appointed by FSU. And Kristin Costa, who serves also as ALR member, appointed by the board itself. We currently have a vacancy where Ms. Gwen Graham served, and she is, that position was appointed by the state attorney. As you can see, our board is, comes from diverse segments of our community, and is those perspectives that helped us establish the recommendations we came with today. Our deliberations helped make those recommendations, as well as reaching out to the community and asking for their input. We receive recommendations from the citizens as well. Eight of them were presented to us. We consider some of them to be outside our purview. One we were discussing today in our presentation. We gave them to you to consider as well as something the board, the commission may consider in the future if they want to discuss that. At this time, I'd like to discuss the recommendations that we presented to the city commission. The first group will deal with lobbying itself. As you've heard from citizens itself, the definition of lobbying is circular. When you say lobbying is what lobbyists does, and lobbyist is one who lobbies, you scratch your head and wondering, what does that mean exactly? So our proposal is to shore up that definition, to hold lobbyists to a higher standard, and that definition derives from statutes and from other ordinances we've seen. And also, including in the definition, is the exemptions that are also some part of the ordinance. We want to put it all in one section of the ordinance. That way, when people go to see what lobbying is, they understand exactly what it is and what is not considered lobbying, so they can better judge their actions when it come before this, before this commission. Next, we'd like to codify something that's already in rule. Currently, they have to register, lobbyists have to register what they are lobbying on behalf or what ordinance they're discussing. We'd like to make that part of the ordinance, that they do, when they register as a lobbyist, they have to, they have to define what they are lobbying on, what ordinance they're here to discuss before you. We want to require cover individuals to make sure that lobbyists are properly registered with the treasurer clerk. Put the onus on those individuals who are discussing, meeting with the lobbyist. Ask them to look into and make sure that those they're meeting with are probably registered with the clerk as well. We want the lobbyists, when they meet with you, to maintain a contact log, to indicate what they met with you, what they discussed, and when. And within three days of that activity, to present that to the treasurer clerk. That way, it ensures more transparency as far as what lobbyists are meeting with their leaders and what they're here to discuss. At the state level, the legislature bans contingency fees for lobbyists. We would like the city commission to adopt that same contingency ban on lobbyists, to ensure that the lobbyists are not, the propositions before the board are clear and transparent and more accountable to what they're presenting to the board, the commission itself. And currently, there is a compensation, compensation report that is maintained by the city. We're asking that this may be made available on the website and make that part of the ordinance. Those recommendations we discussed on lobbying are things the city can vote on with no change to a charter. The next recommendation will require a change to a charter, and that is because we're asking for the city commission to grant the Independent Ethics Board jurisdiction over matters regarding penalties against lobbyists. Currently, if there's a penalty or dispute on penalty against a lobbyist, that can be appealed to a circuit court. We're asking that the Ethics Board serve in that position of an appellate board. So if there is a dispute within the city on penalties against lobbyists, we'll be the ones reviewing that issue. It will be kept in-house, and it'll be an administrative role that we can serve in that capacity. Those are recommendations regarding lobbying in general. Moving on to definition of misuse of position. When this commission expanded the ethics code in 2019, broader than it has ever been before, it helped expand the role that the Ethics Board plays and also shore up our ethics code in general. We redefine the use, the definition of misuse of position to remove the word corruptly, which lowered the hurdle of when we can find a violation, which was good. The issue we came across is, when we put that definition to practice, we had difficulty deciphering what is the role that this person played in? Is that violation, one that the action was, that's a responsibility as a leader, or is it something truly a violation? What we would like to do is introduce into the definition of misuse of position something that's found in the statute, which is an act that's inconsistent with the proper performance of a public official. That will give us more of a, it would not be as broad as it is before, but it'll give us more of a focused attention to what is a true violation of the ethics code, and help us dedicate our resources to those violations, instead of spinning on wheels to determine whether or not this does or does not fall within the violation of the ethics code. Next, we'll ask, we're asking for some tools for the Ethics Board to deal with dismissals and remedial actions. Right now, if a violation is found, if a complaint is found, we will have to have a hearing to determine if there is legal sufficiency to that violation, and then conduct an investigation, and only then determine if we can have probable cause to move forward. We would like the opportunity to be able to dismiss a violation if we find that it was inadvertent or issues where we can actually make the determination without having to go through a whole process of investigation. If you can tell on the front end, this can be dismissed because it does not, does not meet that violation or does not serve the public going forward this issue. Also, one of the issues we have is when there is violation alleged, you know, the only thing we have at our disposal is finding a violation or not finding a violation, and that's it. There are instances where acts get close to violation but doesn't cross over, and we have no remedy at that point. What we would like is the opportunity, the option to enter a stipulated agreement with the individual who the action was brought against. There will be no wrongdoing found, but just find, use as a learning experience, saying, this is an issue that was brought up. At this time, there's no violation, but bear these issues in mind going forward. This is how you can avoid a possible violation. So it gives us more opportunity to educate the members of the city of when or when it is not a violation, instead of simply saying dismissing the case and leaving it at that. And the other issue we have is a scrivener's error discussing the disclosure of non-public information. I think it was, I think covered entities were used in one instance and not in another, so basically just correct that little scrivener's error. Those are recommendations we brought before this board in our letters. The issue of jurisdiction was something that the commission heard in a previous meeting. It was discussed in the citizens as well. We sent a legal memo to indicate that right now, not clear. It's clearly not clear of what is, is not within our, if it falls within our jurisdiction. And you guys voted on the opinion of their city attorney, which is fine. Our attorney's feelings were not hurt, but going forward, you'll have to actually make an action on that. Saying that you like one opinion over the other is not definitive. If you believe that we should not have jurisdiction on this matter, then you'll have to pass an ordinance change to indicate such that you want, you believe the CRA should fall solely under the state Ethics Board. As of right now, we will continue to operate as we have in the past, and it's not going to change until some change happens to ordinance, just to make that clear. We feel that we are good standing on this position, and we will continue to move forward until that, we are told otherwise by the judge or by ordinance. We are not until that, we are told otherwise by the judge or by ordinance, we are not going to change our position.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, we tend to throw around Blueprint and CRA. I am assuming that you are also including the CRTPA, which is the MPO, in that discussion as well.
Are we doing that, I believe?
That's the other governmental entity.
Have we discussed that? We don't have discussed that in particular, but it would, if you're serving that capacity as a city, if you're on that board, or that as a result of being a city commissioner, you know, the city, that attorney general opinion was stating that you cannot have dual office. You kind, that's a public office, you cannot be both a city commissioner and distinct from that board. So I consider that the same. If you're serving that as a city commissioner, then you're serving on that board because of city commissioner. It cannot be a separate office.
I think one word that would clarify that is co-mingling, where you are co-mingling.
What was that, what's that again?
Co-mingling. In other words, when I sit and watch a CRA board meeting, it's sometimes it's hard for me to tell the difference, because the same staff that's serving you as city commissioner is serving them through the CRA process.
That is changed.
Not exactly.
Okay.
No, we have a separate, Commissioner Porter, I'm coming to you in just a second. Now, there is a separate executive director outside of the City of Tallahassee with separate staff outside the City of Tallahassee. That's action that was just recently taken action. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know we're going to have more opportunity for discussion. I'm curious, and I know we're going to hear from others, and so, Mr. Mayor, let me know if this discussion's going to come later. You know, I serve on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. I think we have commissioners who sit as spots on nonprofit boards that are reserved for commissioners. You know, a City of Tallahassee commissioner has a seat. So, I'm not even weighing in on an opinion either way, but I, whatever we do moving forward, we want to make sure that we're including that, you know, the downtown, the tourist development council. I, you know, we need to consider all of those.
Of course.
So I'll save my other comments for later. Thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, my fault for interrupting.
No, that's fine.
Looking for clarification on the MPO.
I appreciate it.
You have the floor.
And final thing is the whistleblower protection. I think that was mentioned before in the citizens' discussion. Several cities and counties identify Inspector General, some of them as the mayor, and also the Ethics Board as a local, appropriate local official to accept whistleblower complaints. The reason we're seeking this authority to accept these complaints is that it will allow us to, you know, it will avoid confusion as far as when people file a complaint that they do not, they file with us, they may not feel they have whistleblower protection, or they file with Inspector General. It will allow us to coordinate any investigations with Inspector General, because the whistleblower protection does, all the information is confidential. So while that information is ongoing, if the Inspector General is the only one that has that, we cannot in any way engage. And if there's, if we don't have the protection, we don't have the authority and public records to maintain that confidential after investigation is done. We're simply, simply complaints. That information is not confidential, it's, it's not public during a time investigation. Once investigation is over, we have to, we have no authority to maintain that confidential. So we're asking to identify us as a local, appropriate local official to accept whistleblower protections. Again, I thank you for the commission to holding this workshop. We look forward to working with you, continue this path of strengthening our Ethics Code.
Thank you. Mr. Floyd? Thanks for your service as the Ethics Officer.
And this is very brief. I just want to clarify one thing. On the penalties and the revisions of the Ethics Code, a great part of that is that right now, if we find something, we can only find probable cause. We cannot dismiss something or address it, or take any remedial action beyond probable cause. After probable cause, then we can enter in a stipulation agreement or something less harmful. If with what we're proposing, we'll be able to enter an agreement or do like a letter of instruction or a letter of guidance, something of that nature, and address it before it becomes a probable cause issue. We don't have that freedom right now to do that. We have to go directly to probable cause at this state. So, as an example, just if we, if we find legal sufficiency on something, we investigate it, we determine there's probable cause. The current penalty, we have to go directly to probable cause, and then it can go through a long hearing process, informal or formal hearings, and et cetera. With this change, we could enter an agreement, enter an agreement with the person alleged and end that before it goes to probable cause through something like a letter of guidance, and that's just an example, if it's something that's not really that serious, but needs to be addressed.
Just real quick, I'll be remiss. Not to say thank you to Mr. Floyd, our Ethics Officer, Mr. Reed, our board counsel, and Ms. Lucy Atkinson, our Minister of Assistant, who helped us keep going on this path and keep us on a straight and narrow.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
I really don't have any comments. I'm just here available to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Mr. Manager, you want to start us off?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just offer a couple of comments. I think the chair has done a good job outlining their recommendations, and I won't comment on all of them. I would say, for the benefit of the City Commission and your consideration, as it relates to the inclusion of additional language in the definition of misuse of public position, it includes new words in the proposed version that add inconsistent with the proper performance of his or her office. I would say that may create a secondary standard that may be difficult to interpret. The words today basically create a reasonable person test, that if, you know, reasonable person were determined that the individual misused their position for personal gain, to me, that standard probably is easier to determine, so I share those thoughts and comments with you. Additionally, as it relates to the whistleblower protection, in 2020, the City Commission took action to provide a great deal of clarity in terms of the process. So we've always had a process that was anchored by a state statute. For the most part, the city manager would have been that person with the authority. In this case, it conveys the authority to the Inspector General, which is independent of the city manager's office, which controls most of the employees. Most of the employees work by charter through the city manager. I think it's clear, I know I address city employees on a regular basis. Clarity is important, so that there's no confusion which, you know, path they may travel. What we also know is city employees can lodge complaints on a variety of things, not limited to, within the City of Tallahassee as an organizational structure, but the local Ethics Board, the State Ethics Commission, the Attorney General, the state attorney, there's a variety of places. And so I do believe that the ordinance change that you implemented in 2020 provides clarity, and that's important for city employees to understand where to take their complaints. So I offer that point of view for your consideration as well. Mr. Mayor, that's all the comments I have.
Excellent. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go through some of the points that were raised, and starting with the lobbying. So, one of the things that, at least from a background perspective that I did, along with the attorneys for Blueprint and the attorneys for the county, is that we reviewed the lobbying provisions, and we wanted to make sure, because we wanted the public not to be confused about what the standards were, to actually try to the extent possible to recommend the same provisions for each entity. And the hope there was that we would have a lobbying provisions that were essentially the same in substantial respects. And so that, I think, provides clarity, it provides a focused way that the public can know what, who is a lobbyist, and what process needs to be followed. I do take exception with the statement that it is circular. I think it's very clear, if you look at the definition of lobbying, it describes what lobbying is. It's an oral or written communication where you're trying to advance a particular position, whether that be to pass, defeat, modify, repeal a particular provision that is going to go for a vote before the City Commission. You're a lobbyist if you do that and you're being paid. That's not circular. That's just stating what the definitions are. Let's see.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Sure. Mr. Mattla.
And I'll direct it to our current ordinance and the proposed. This week, I received an email from a realtor that's representing somebody looking to purchase property on West Tennessee Street, and they were requesting a meeting with the prospective buyer and indicated that. They had also set up meetings with the French Town TAC team. Is that lobbying in our current definition, or is that lobbying in the proposed definition? If you're the realtor bringing a client around for a property sale, which you could, you're expected to be compensated when that property is sold, I just wanted to see if that fit in either definitions.
So, certainly, I would have to know more facts, but it seems to me, if we look at the definition, the definition says an oral or written communication which is designed to persuade, either to modify, change, or what, you know, some action of a decision-making body. So if that is what that person is doing, that person is lobbying.
Okay. Mr. Mattla?
And from the Ethics Board position, does that fit in the current definition, or is your proposed definition covered that type of act?
Again, I would, I would need to have more facts to understand exactly what the ultimate goal of the realtor is, if they're trying to influence a sale or an action taken by the City. City Commission isn't.
It would be a City Commission vote to approve the sale of the property.
Yeah, based on those limited facts, it does appear that they are seeking to influence an action taken by the commission. So I do think it would probably fall into this. And I think, and I think that the definition as it currently exists, if we were to read it as Attorney Jackson stated, to say that any action meant to influence falls under the existing definition, I think it would fall into that, under that reading as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Regarding the recommendations as to registration and contact logs, you know, we currently have an ordinance that provides for registration, as well as the filing of these compensation reports. The statement, I think what they're, they're actually asking, I guess, is that the official be the one to identify or to tell that person, you need to make sure you are registered. In my opinion, and I think in most jurisdictions, including the state, that, the requirement is on the lobbyist to, and we certainly do, I think all of us try to assist folks who appear to be lobbying, but to have something in the code where that could be possibly a penalty for the person who is receiving the information seems to me to go too far. Certainly, we should all help, and we should all assist folks in knowing where they need to go if they're engaging in lobbying, but to have a requirement on the covered individual to do that does seem to be penalizing the person who should not be penalized.
Contingency fees?
Contingency fees, those fees are authorized, currently can occur under our provisions, but they are prohibited at the state level. So if the commission decides to go in that direction, certainly, there seems no problem Regarding the expansion of lobbyist penalties, it seems to me that there is a provision in our code that provides what the penalties are for lobbying, and it also provides for the process by which someone could seek review. Having a level in between does not seem to be something that would be necessary. Regarding the change in misuse of public position, you may recall that the state definition in, under misuse of position uses the word corruptly. That provision is defined in state law as to have an improper or wrong motive, and to be inconsistent with the duties and responsibilities. I think that the addition of inconsistent with duties and responsibilities does track state law and the case law that flows therefrom. So the addition of that, I think, is clarifying and likely helpful.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Madam Attorney, but what is the difference between corruptly and the new definition?
You may recall that in 2019, we were discussing the standard that was to be used for misuse of position. The state standard, I think it is helpful, because we have a body of case law that we can rely on in interpreting that standard. So that the more aligned we are with state law, in my opinion, the more notice to the commissioner or the employee as to what could be wrong, what they should not do. So, what the commission did in its last amendment is it used the words, instead of having wrongful intent, which has been interpreted by case law, you adopted the standard of new or should have known. And so that, that presents a bit of a quandary for the public official, because there is no guidance necessarily as to what new or should have known is. The definition of wrongful intent has guidance in case law as to what that means, and then that second half, inconsistent with public responsibilities, also has guidance in case law. So I think this seems to get us halfway there, or part of the way there, in terms of that state definition, which will help in applying the law in any particular situation. But certainly, if you use corruptly, that would be greater clarity for an official.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
So my question to the Ethics Board is that why didn't we go back to corruptly instead of creating another definition? It says there is, there's a state law in cases that could be used to solidify a position.
Yeah, primarily, it's the Blackburn case from the first DCA that lays out what wrongful intent, which is tied to the term corruptly in the state statute. I'd also point out that previously, the local ordinance prior to December of 2019 did use actually the exact definition from state law, which uses the term corruptly. And it was the recommendation of the Ethics Board at the time, that the word corruptly maybe creates a, too high of a hurdle for our board to bring cases, so we lowered that hurdle and removed the term corruptly. I think during the process, over the past two years, we've found that maybe that hurdle got a little too low, because now, the way it reads is if somebody is to use, and really, I think if, as Mr. Manager stated, if you use it to benefit yourself, that's an easy, easy fix. The language that has run us into problems is the benefit of others. And the way I've read this, and this is concerning, is if one of you goes and cuts a ribbon at a brand-new business that's opening up and says, "Congratulations," and now they're in the press because you drew them there, did you do something that benefited that business to the expense of other businesses? I think everybody would agree that it's kind of in your job responsibility to cut ribbons and do those types of things to encourage economic development in the community. So we felt that, we thought it went a little too far. Now, does that mean we want to reflexively go back to the term corruptly? We're not quite sure we want to go that far. I think we found this kind of, the porch is too hot, porch is too cold, this porch is just right, approach that says it would have to be inconsistent with the proper performance. So an instance such as the cutting of a ribbon clearly would be consistent with the proper performance. If you, you know, gave a heads-up to a developer to say, "Hey, we're doing this, put your bid in now," that clearly would not be consistent with the proper performance. So I think we were just trying to find that middle-of-the-road approach that would not heighten the burden as high as it was previously, but wouldn't have it so low now that we're inadvertently having to crack down on people that are really just doing their jobs.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you for that explanation. So, what I So what I'm interpreting in my analytical mind is that we adopted some wholesale reforms two year, 2019. And what we're now doing is trying to see where adjustments are needed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And as those adjustments are, are revealed, we're trying to do a set, a ready set. I understand that, but what I also don't understand is sometimes it's premature, that we need time for things to happen so that we can see a trend of some sort before we start. You know, you, you start taking stuff off of one end of the scale and putting it on the other end of the scale, and, you know, you're not making a difference. You're just moving stuff from place to place. So I'm just trying to figure out, as I sit here and listen, where are we headed? And what we'd be doing is every couple of years, resetting with more, more reforms before we even had an opportunity for the ones that we, we've done previously to settle. So that's, that's where my, my, my thoughts are coming from.
Okay.
So thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this may be for the attorney or it may be for one of the other appointed officials, but this whole issue of being able to dismiss a violation without an investigation, and then if it comes close to probable cause, but not going through a probable cause investigation, um, I mean, to me, that's like if the speed limit is 30 and you're doing 29 and you're stopped by the police, or if you're, if you're doing 31, rather, and you're stopped by the police, they can say, well, I'm gonna let this go because you, you got close, but, but you didn't quite violate the law, so I'm gonna let this go and I'm gonna just write you up. If, if they didn't, if there isn't probable cause found, then I don't know what recourse then the Ethics Board should have to admonish that person or to give them any kind of corrective action. So if you could explain that, and Madam Attorney, if you could address it.
Could I clarify? Because slight misunderstanding.
Sure, okay. Mr. Floyd.
That, that would be an alternative to probable cause. So, and I, when I worked for the City, for the Crown Justice Training Commission, there were times where you, you might have probable cause, but you decided for whatever reason that as an alternative to probable cause, you're gonna give them a letter of instruction, for example, which essentially says, we're not gonna take this any further, but don't do it again, or something like that. So it's after the investigation, but it's in lieu of probable cause.
All right, Mr. Manager, you wanna weigh in?
Yes, sir. I'd like to offer a comment that may be helpful, and I think what the Ethics Officer says is helpful to me to even understand where they may be going with this. We, we already have the condition that exists, and, and we've got a good line of communication where a complaint may be lodged with the Ethics Office that doesn't squarely fall within, it's not an ethics complaint, frankly. It may be a performance of duty of, you know, somebody saw a city employee do something they didn't think was operationally correct, not an ethics violation. And those are already passed back to us. I think this is, this truly is getting at, this fits squarely in the realm of an ethics investigation. And I think what the Ethics Officer, it helps me understand it because I agree with you. Those things that really don't rise to the level of an ethics comment or finding are, you know, best managed within the management, but I think that happens today. So I think that was my concern. I just wanted to share those comments. I'm not hearing that's the case. This is a different matter. This, these are those things that are legitimately investigated and findings may be brought. So I just wanted to share that we do already have circumstances where it may not be really an ethics investigation, but something of a different nature that doesn't rise to a written comment or action by the Ethics Office.
Mayor Protim.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just as a follow-up, it, it's my understanding that unless and until probable cause is found, the investigation itself is not open for public inspection. So this remedy that you're suggesting, would that be open for public inspection short of a finding of probable cause?
Not to, not until it gets to a probable cause hearing. It, it just gives the board an alternative. The way it is right now, the board would have to find probable cause and then issue a letter of instruction.
Okay.
With this proposal, the board at a probable cause hearing can issue a letter of instruction instead of a finding of probable cause. It, it just gives the board a little more leeway in acting with the respondent. And there's, there's, because even during the investigation, there's communication with the respondent over the personal letter, because they're, they're made aware of the complaint during the investigative process. And so it just, it was just given another, an opportunity to some, put something on your record other than a probable cause.
Okay, I'm gonna, on this issue.
I was gonna just clarify very briefly. I think the, the key to this, I've done administrative law where Florida Elections Commission, I just had a case there where you enter into a stipulation, I'm, I'm the attorney on the respondent, I enter to a stipulation that says there's no finding of wrongdoing, there's no admission of wrongdoing, we're just stipulating to, and, and currently, based on this, the way that 2-16 is raised, we can't take any action unless we find a violation. And a lot of times, it's that finding of the violation that many times is the greater punishment for somebody that whose, whose reputation is important to their position. So we wanted to find a way where once we, we get to the legal sufficiency finding, at that point, we are required under our rules of procedure to, to notify the respondent, they could retain counsel. We engage, a lot of times, they communicate with us, provide memorandums of law, et cetera. We would then have the opportunity at that point to discuss with them, hey, we think it might be in the better interest of the public to use this as an educational purpose, and let's just find no wrongdoing, but let's just maybe do an additional four hours of, of Dwight's ethics training. I say that's punishment enough. And, and, you know, and that might be a, a better way to move forward. I think since Mr. Floyd's been here, he's placed a greater emphasis on education that he has on punishment, and I think that's definitely the right direction that we want to go in, and this kind of continues in that, in that direction.
Just go ahead. Commissioner Porter, I see you with your hand up, I got to do it.
So if, if that, if you enter into that stipulation, is there a record of it so that if this person, for some reason, finds themselves in the same or similar situation, you can say, well, listen, we, you've been here before, and there was a stipulation, but here you are again? So there is a record of that, and that can be used if there's another case brought before the board?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
After Commissioner Porter, we're gonna come back to the City Attorney to finish her comments, we're gonna get to Inspector General. Ms. Cook, you are in charge of lobbyist registration, so if you want to comment as well on some of the proposals, that'd be great. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, that was actually my question, if, if Mr. Floyd had finished and when it was time, because I have questions on.
Sure.
A couple of items, and I wasn't sure if we were waiting, because I know we started doing that.
I agree with you. I would like to get through comments and then come back, but it's your floor.
Okay. Oh, no, I, I'm ready to move on.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you. On, on the penalty provisions, having an ability at an early stage to short-circuit the process because perhaps it clearly was an unintentional violation seems to be a reasonable approach. However, it seems to me that the ability to issue a penalty should be limited to something like training or maybe a letter giving advice or counsel, like an advisory opinion as opposed to a written reprimand or an oral reprimand. It seems to me those items do still carry the same weight regardless of whether or not you have a hearing or not. Regarding the disclosure or use of non-public information, that there was no Scrivener's error, even though it has been called a Scrivener's error, the intention was to limit the folks to which this particular provision applied to. Certainly, the, under state law, all employees and officials are subject to this provision, but the thought was to have a limited applicability regarding the city's local ethics code. Regarding my opinion that I provided to you regarding the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board, as I stated at our last meeting, that opinion was based on a review of the particulars of the charter, the fact that there is a limitation on an ability to expand by ordinance jurisdiction when you have had a item that has gone before the people, the fact that we have no legislative history that indicates that was the intention, that actions taken on these boards by members were to be subject to the Ethics Board jurisdiction. So as I said, they are separate and independent legal entities, and as a part of my responsibilities, I am required to maintain that separation to the extent that I can, and that was the purpose of the opinion. With regard to the whistleblower jurisdiction, it, it seems to me that we have had very limited use of these, these provisions as, under the Inspector General. We need to have an opportunity to see the cycle run and, and see how these, these particular investigations interplay with our legal responsibilities. One of the reasons why I had recommended that the Inspector General be able to be a local appropriate person is because we want to have an opportunity to thoroughly resolve these matters, if at all possible, before it reaches the litigation phase, and that was why I recommended that we have a process before it goes to court so this could be done. The jurisdiction of the Ethics Board is very limited, and it would cause, I think, greater confusion for the, for the public as well as employees to have different forums, and certainly would complicate the legal process in terms of review.
Mr. Inspector General, good to see you.
Thank you, sir. As I started, stated originally, you know, the, most of my comments are of a advisory-type nature, kind of a, let's avoid some unintended consequences in these, in these changes, not for or against my comments. The first one has to do with the lobbying and dealing with covered individuals being required to ensure that those lobbying him or her on a particular issue are registered. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that if, if a commissioner is in a social setting and someone comes up and starts talking to them and it seems like lobbying, I don't want the commissioner to then run afoul of this provision and have to stop the conversation and then do some kind of check to see if that person is a lobbyist before that conversation goes forward. My, my other thought here is that if a, a complaint is filed against a commissioner for not ensuring that they've verified the registration, what, what kind of evidence could they bring forward to show that they have insured that, that provision? And it seems to me at that point, the commissioner would have to keep a log to show that in each time they've been lobbied, they, they have to ensure the, the registration of the lobbyist. I don't think that's something that's intended at all by this provision, but it's just kind of one of those things, let's avoid unintended consequences here. And so that, that's really the extent of my comments as far as the lobbying goes. As far as the misuse of public position, I think that the, the, the changes are somewhat dependent on who the complaint may be against. I think if there was a complaint related to a, a staff person from the city, because it applies to covered individuals, I, I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the, the Independent Ethics Board determining what is the proper performance of an employee's duties. I think that should be management that determines the proper performance of someone's duties. I think what we're really trying to get at here is the benefit. So it's an improper benefit to somebody doing their duties. Now, when it comes to the commissioners, I think that's a different, a different type discussion, but for staff members, covered individuals, I think that, that the manager should decide what's consistent with somebody's performance of their duties. As far as penalties, I don't have any, any comments there. I think that, that it's been well-discussed already. As far as disclosure of non-public information, I, I echo the city attorneys that I don't believe that that was a Scrivener's error. It was intended to be applied to those with the capacity and ability to misuse non-public information. And in, it, covered individuals are much, are more than just the commissioners. It applies to the appointed officials, it applies to those with purchasing capacity and approval, it extends that far. As far as the expanded jurisdiction, I don't have any comments there. When it comes to whistleblower, it, it kind of mirrors what I said a minute ago. I think that it, it, there's a difference between a complaint against the commission and a rank-and-file employee. As you well, well know, the Inspector General does not have jurisdiction over the commission or the commissioner's staff. Additionally, there's no, I have no jurisdiction over myself or my office, and, and I also have no jurisdiction over the Independent Ethics Board. Those are the three areas where there's, there's, lack of a better term, a hole in, in the oversight function. So, so I think that if, if we're gonna go forward with the whistleblower protection changes, it, it should be limited to those areas, that it, it would create confusion to have multiple complaints for multiple things going to different places, that whistleblower should go to places where there isn't current oversight function in place. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, any comments?
Just a couple, and mostly of, of a general nature. I think on the big picture of the lobbyist registration and just the process, I think it's, a couple of things are important to note. One is I think most people who are lobbyists know how things work and want to comply. Most people are not doing this on a one-off basis. The people we think of as lobbyists, they do that for a living, whether it's here, Orlando, the state, so they understand their rules and they want to comply because it's good for their business to, to not get in trouble. As far as some of the, the details about codifying information that's on the registration form or putting information on the website, I, I don't want to get into weeds of those things here. I will just say that I think generally, we've had some, some good agreement without having to do too much in terms of language. As, as an example, at one point, the board was asking to have registrations available on the city's website. At that very time, we were developing that, that very process and had, I think by the time they were, completed their recommendation, we had completed our process, so almost simultaneously we got to the same place. So at that point, we could have had to make a change in our, in our ordinance, but in reality, we just worked together to, to get things, get things done. So I think there's some general agreement on, on some of those processes that I wouldn't want those details to bog down the larger picture.
Excellent. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter, you've been waiting patiently for your questions. We're gonna start off the commission discussion and direction with you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for, I had a lot of conversations yesterday and over the course of the week, so I appreciate how diligently, especially the Independent Ethics Board and the advocacy group has, has delved into these issues. I, I do have a few questions. So for the, I'm gonna go in order as it was presented to us. The first ordinance requiring covered individuals to ensure lobbyists are properly registered. My understanding is that if we run into someone at a gala or a social event, under the new definition of, or the definition of lobbying here, it wouldn't just be some random lobbyist at the city who's done business or might do business saying, hey, Jack, what's up? You know, in a social way. It would be them saying, and this is a clarifying question, my understanding is that it would be, the standard is, you know, hey, I've got this client, this is, hopefully, we want to get this on the agenda, or how do you think about this? I mean, and at that point, you're really not having a social conversation, you're having a, a business meeting, even if you are in a social setting. And as we know, sometimes business meetings happen in social settings. And at that point, as we are trained already to do with quasi-judicial issues or, you know, sunshine issues, we know. know, sunshine issues, we know already to say, "Hey, you know, is this, you know, are you on this board?" So, we already sort of are trained to do that, but in this case, you know, the question would be, "Are you a lobbyist? Are you registered?" And then, if it is in fact a meeting to the level that meets the definition, it would be the responsibility of the lobbyist to record that meeting, correct?
Correct.
I still do wonder, you know, reading the language specifically, and honestly, I'm not necessarily opposed to the language we have, but if there is some, you know, the word "ensure" is, I'm not opposed, that's not my point, but, you know, "has to the best of their ability," or something like that, like, how do you interpret insured? Like, if I go and, you know, how do you, how are you thinking through what that entails?
The way we envision is basically in that situation, you know, you have somebody come before you, you go back to your office, you verify, okay, is this person who came before me, is he a lobbyist or not? Are they probably registered before I meet with, if they want to come and meet with me, are they a lobbyist? You ensure that part. I know you guys have been trained, there's great commissioners that have been trained, you guys aren't going to be here forever.
Right.
And I don't hope to be here forever either. But, this will put and codify that requirement that when you guys are, when future commissioners are dealing with members of the public and they come up to you, they can go back and say, "Okay, this is, you are required to ensure that anybody who comes up to you is a lobbyist is registered as a lobbyist before you sit down and meet with them properly."
Right. No, and that makes sense, and I mean, I have been to other city halls and city commission offices where they have a big sign. You know, you're walking into the city commission office and it says, you know, "If you are not a registered lobbyist," or, you know, I was thinking even that for, not as a part of an ordinance, but, you know, we could have on our emails, I'm a covered, you know, at the end of our email, like in the signature, "I'm a covered individual. Our definitions of lobbying have recently changed," if we do that. "If you are whatever, you must register with the City of Clerk's Office. Failure to register." You know, there are, I guess I just say that I don't think it's as hard as it sounds to make this very clear, and I do agree that most lobbyists are professional, they know what to expect, they're used to lobbying in different jurisdictions that have slightly different expectations of them, and so I don't see it as being, and I've thought about it, you know, and I know you have all thought about it more than probably anyone, so, but I wanted to ask that clarifying question. As far as, and this is maybe for our city attorney or, so, right now, we don't have, do we have any lobbying registration process for the CRA?
I think that would probably be best handled by clerk. I know that Blueprint utilizes the clerk's services to register. The CRA, I am not certain.
Okay.
We don't have a specific and separate process set up, that's something that we could...
Has anyone ever registered to lobby an item before the CRA?
I'm going to look at the back of the room. I don't think so, not that I know of.
I'm not trying to like catch anyone, I'm just curious because we're talking about...
Understand, and the reason I look is that I don't recall one, but also, we may have had individuals register with us because of a CRA matter, and they used the registration form on the website, because typically they would be looking for information, you find a registration form and submit it, and we do, as was, I think, part of the discussion on one of the recommendations, ask people to identify the issue, and we see everything from an individual registering out of an abundance of caution, because they have a client who might have something coming forward, in which case they aren't actually doing any lobbying at that point, to people with very specific items who can point to an ordinance number. So, it runs the gamut, and we would need to probably just do a review of those to see if we could identify anything specific to CRA.
Okay. Well, I'll address that when I get to the jurisdiction question, but I do think, you know, that's, we need a, I would feel more comfortable if we had a clear answer to that question. I think that would be important because there's real money at the CRA that people lobby for. Okay.
Please.
To the dismissal and remedial actions, I had some of the same thoughts that have been discussed already. My question is, if there is no wrongdoing found, I do think that needs to be clear in whatever letter, because, you know, talking about clarity to the public, whatever comes after it, you know, saying, that's important to me because, you know, these things become very political and they do end up becoming public, and whether it's wrongdoing found or not, that needs to be clear. And will that be included in whatever assessment you make?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I think that, if I understand what you're saying, I think we missed up once before where we sent a letter on something that was dismissed, and we learned from that. I don't think that's the intent
Right.
of this for us to, because once we, once it's dismissed, there's nothing to talk about.
Right.
There's no issue. So, the intent of this is not to send a letter after something has been dismissed, it's really to, it's, from my perspective and the way we see it, continue to see it, is to your advantage, because as John talked about, it gives an alternative to putting on your record that, for something that is not that serious.
Right.
And, oh, I'm talking about that, the, this whole issue with, even with the misuse definition, the reason we brought it is because we have had struggles in our closed sessions with the definition, where we're almost forced to address something because of the way it's written right now, that we would not, that we did not necessarily think it was something that it met the public's best interest, per se, but because of the way it's defined today, we had to move forward with it. If we change the definition based on experience, then, again, it would work in everybody's, including the public's best interest, so.
I would just only add that, as I understand it, it is a stipulation. Is that correct? So, if it is not, if it's a stipulation, you would be agreeing to it.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, you could always just go to the hearing, go to the hearing.
Yes, and I didn't want to make that point. This is not something we can do unilaterally.
Right.
It is a stipulation that has to be agreed upon by the respondent, and the respondent could say, "You know what? I don't like that language.
Okay.
I want better lang," and we'll go back and forth and try to work in good faith with them to do that. If ultimately we propose language and say, "This is our final and best offer," and they say, "No," they always have that option to file a petition and seek a hearing, and we do contract with the Division of Administrative Hearing, so we have an independent finder of fact that would provide that, so they always have that option.
Okay.
This would give us the opportunity to work with them to do, as Attorney Jackson stated, a stipulation which is an agreement by both sides.
Okay. So, really quickly, using as an example an ethics complaint I had against me, where I posted a picture at a food truck, and I posted a picture on my official commission Facebook saying, you know, "Having this meal, come check them out," or something like that. Talk me through how this, and there was no wrongdoing found, or no, you know, and it was dismissed, but at the end of it, it cost the taxpayers $2,000 because I had my attorney's fees recovered. So, talk me through briefly, you know, is this one of those instances where you might say, if we have the new definition of misuse of position and this ability for the Ethics Board, where you can say, what would you say?
I think if we redefined misuse, we wouldn't have gotten past the legal sufficiency standard, and the first you would have found out of the complaint is that it was being dismissed.
Okay.
And when it was dismissed, we actually applied this definition that we're giving you, because we understood that it was in the performance of your duty.
Okay.
And even though the letter of law said we could have found probable cause.
And as part, you know, as part of the due process or the investigation that you do, I mean, let's say, this was not the case at all, but let's say, I'm an investor in this food truck. Will that, will you guys entertain that before you decide? You know, like, will you still go through some sort of investigation before, or no? You only proceed with an investigation if you determine there's probable cause, correct?
Legal sufficiency.
Legal sufficiency, right. So, does that make sense? Like, you know, how deep do you go?
Generally, we do try to stay within the four corners of the complaint. Now, we do have in our procedures the opportunity to reach out to the complainant and say, "Do you have any more information?" And they may then provide the information that
Okay.
the person's an investor, and then I think there, then, that's clearly not in the performance of the job. So, but I think that typically, and we do have some leeway to go a little bit deeper than what's on the page, but typically, we do try to stay within the four corners, so that way, because the last thing we want to do is get into any fishing expeditions. If somebody puts something out and on its face, it looks like, yes, if we assumed all the facts alleged here to be true, there would be a violation, then that is when we take the next step and proceed to a probable cause investigation and hearing.
Yeah, and we look at all, it's sort of like, in criminal cases, they look all at all of the elements.
Mm-hmm.
Here, that's what we do. We look at all of the elements combined, so you may have a part of it, but there may not be a special benefit. So, we go through each of the elements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Porter, let me chime in while we're on the remedial action as well. Let me share my concerns with remedial action. Right now, you either find fault or you don't find fault, okay? And this goes back to the example that the mayor pro tem said, let's say the speed limit is 30 miles per hour. If I'm driving 29 miles per hour and somebody files a complaint, I haven't broken the law, there is no fault. Why am I going to enter into an agreement and have you say, "Man, we don't like the way how you're driving, slow down," when I am not breaking the law or breaking the ethics code? The flip side is, if I'm driving 31 miles per hour, technically speaking, yes, there is fault, but you have the authority right now, don't you, to say, "Okay, yes, there is fault on hand, but you're going one mile over the speed limit, try to slow it down daily." You can still offer that remediation, correct?
Only after probable cause, my friend.
After probable cause.
After probable cause.
Sure, after probable cause, absolutely, but you should do probable cause, because if I'm technically in violation and you find fault, you have to go through.
If you all decide that's what you want, then we'll find probable cause. We're just giving an alternative.
My concern is, is that we're guilty.
Yeah, that 29...
We're guilty.
That 29 would not be legal sufficiency, so we wouldn't address it, period. We'd only address the 31. And we were trying to give ourselves more leeway on how we address you all. If you're comfortable with the way it is now, and you don't want that alternative, it's your decision.
So, what I am hearing is, is that there is only going to be remedial action involved technically if fault has been found, but it is what you would deem to be miniscule or a step over the line, but not a serious infraction?
Well, maybe, maybe not, because we haven't got...
Yeah, exactly, because that's not my interpretation.
We haven't got the probable cause provision. Probable cause is where we're really going to start fleshing out the issues and find out whether a violation occurred or not, but if we start moving in that direction, we say, "Okay, we didn't have a radar gun, but we think you're going 31, and we could go get the radar gun to find out later, but before we expend resources and you have to hire a lawyer and we have to do this, why don't you just slow down?"
Yeah, Mr. Reed, I got a problem with that, though, because
Okay.
there is no fault found, and I was driving 29 miles per hour. That is a very subjective view of, eh, I think you might have been doing it, we might need to go get the radar gun. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
No, I do, and I think in that regard, you would be able to say, "I don't want to enter into a stipulation, let's proceed to hearing because I want to clear my name."
Right.
So, I think you would always have that option.
I do think, though, that it's important that we establish that there is fault that has been found, and I guess, because, look, in the world of public perception, you know, Commissioner Williams Cox gets a letter, everybody thinks she's guilty, all right? You need to slow down, and they're going to say, "You need to slow down," because they think that you were speeding, or in my case, you were speeding, so you need to slow down, even if you weren't. So, very hesitant about, and concerned about not finding fault, not finding anything wrong, but suggesting corrective action, and earlier, what was suggested is an additional four hours of training. If I have not done anything wrong, but yet the letter comes saying, "We did not find anything wrong. We determined that you did not do anything, there's no fault, but we are strongly recommending that you do an additional four hours of training on top of what you're already doing." Well, then, where does that leave me? If I don't do it, now am I in violation? If I don't do it, how does that play? I mean, this is, help me out.
Yeah, and, you know, in a prior career, this was a regular process, and I'll give you an example that's almost comical but true, it happened. There was a probable cause hearing, a police officer was, he tested positive for cocaine, and so he came before the Crown Justice Standards and Training Commission, and, you know, science is science, everybody agrees he tested positive. His explanation was that he kissed his girlfriend while she used cocaine, and the Crown Justice Standards and Training Commission decided to give him another chance. The whole world, including him, knew he, knew what was up, but they decided, rather than to go through an additional hearing process and take him through additional processes, and they would just dismiss it at that point and make it clear to him that if he tested again, it would be severe. Again, the whole world knew that he was guilty, but what eliminated was further hearings and further processes to get to the same place.
Yeah, I have taken up too much time of Commissioner Porter's time on that one question, I apologize. Let's go back, and I'm sure there'll be other conversations about that as we move down.
Yeah, well, and that's okay, and whatever you want, Mr. Mayor, if you want other commissioners to ask their questions on the lobbying, whatever.
Just see how it goes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
You start us off, keep going.
Okay, thank you. So, for the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board, you know, I really regret how this is, it's no one's fault. You know, I feel like I'm being asked to be a judge, where I'm not trained to be a judge, I'm not a lawyer, you know, I can see both sides, and even with Mr. Reed's opinion, we still don't have full coverage if we're talking about employees, you know, because there's these different categories. So, I don't have much to say about this, other than I hate being in this position, and I do hope that we find a way to figure this out, because we've got the CRA, we've got ARPC, you know, there's a lot of considerations here. So, I think I made my position clear at our last city commission meeting, where I'm very comfortable with us, I want us to resolve these issues. I mean, even recently with a complaint from a Blueprint employee against a city commissioner or a Blueprint, you know, a Blueprint member, and it's messy, so I guess I don't, if the city is taking the position it does, the outcome here is that at some point, this is going to be litigated at a higher level until it's, you know, because what I'm hearing from y'all is you're going to continue operating according to how you are interpreting the Ethics Board's jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, city attorney, I mean, or, you know, whoever, the, what is the logical conclusion if things continue?
Madam Attorney, can I jump in?
Certainly.
So, Commissioner Porter, I heard loud and clear on a floor one, the direction of the city commission. What I heard today, correct me if I'm wrong, is they are going to stick with their attorney's opinion on how they interpret unless we, as a commission, take proactive action. What I think that would mean is we'd have to codify in local ordinance exactly the jurisdiction, so we would need to bring that up, if you wanted to, or anybody wanted to bring that up at a city commission meeting for further informal consideration to codify. Is that how I'm understanding it correctly, Madam Attorney? Did I get to it, Commissioner Porter?
Yeah, but if we don't codify it, if we just say, "Well, it speaks for itself..."
This is usual for us. We will not change the direction we're taking right now.
Okay.
But isn't that if the complaint is made with the Ethics Board as opposed to the Ethics Commission?
Yes.
We are still covered by the Ethics Commission.
Yes, correct.
And the complaint could be made to the commission
Correct.
and not the board. and not the Board.
Correct.
You're saying, if it's made to the Board, we're going to proceed?
Correct.
Okay.
If they get a complaint against me in regards to CRA or Blueprint, they're still going to look into it, is what they're saying, unless we codify something formally and say, "No, that's not, that's not the direction we're going." Is that?
That is what I understand to be their position, that they are planning to still receive complaints. The question is, what will happen when the complaint is received?
Right.
Will the issue be raised? And will there be some reason to take that further to a court, at a court?
Right, like, I could, if I get, you know, a complaint against me, an investigation as a CRA Board member, I can sue the Ethics Board, can't I? And say, "You have no jurisdiction."
Yeah.
And then, that go, that was kind of my question. That's, if someone decides to take that, okay.
Correct.
And this, I understand, is maybe another discussion we have to have, but, and, you know, according to your own opinion. So, would that include as well Blueprint and CRA employees? Would you, if there's an ethics complaint brought against a Blueprint employee who is a, you know, for the purposes of their HR, a City employee, you would hear that?
I may. Sure. It, it depends, and I do, I do want to point out, Attorney Jackson's opinion, I thought, was very, very well done. We, we have a slight difference of opinion, but that doesn't mean I'm right, she's wrong, or vice versa. I think we both make big, good arguments. I think we're, the position is, we're not going to say if it's Blueprint, we're automatically moving forward. Whenever we get something in the door, our very first question is whether we have jurisdiction. And we're going to look at the elements and say, "Okay, who is the person? Does that person fall within our personal jurisdiction?" The Charter lays it out, City Officers, Members of Boards, City Employees. Then, our next step would be, "Okay, well, is the subject matter within our jurisdiction?" I think an example I've used is, Blueprint, I think, is comprised of City and County employees. If somebody were to file a complaint against somebody that worked with Blueprint, but they were a County employee, I think that would be an easy judgment for us to say, "No, we lack jurisdiction over that individual." If one of you is a member of Blueprint, Blueprint has its own lobbyist registration and procedures in place, and somebody was registered as a lobbyist with Blueprint, but not registered with the City of Tallahassee, and you accepted something of value, would that be a violation of our gift ban? I would argue, we would not have jurisdiction in that case, because we wouldn't have jurisdiction over the prohibition of accepting a gift from a lobbyist who's only registered with Blueprint. So, really, it's, it's not that we're always going to have jurisdiction. We're, it's, this is really always going to be a case-by-case basis, and, and, you know, we're going to be as conservative as we can to try to, you know, make sure we don't go outside the lines and what, what the voters, the authority the voters gave us. But we're going to just have to look at each. Mr. Sutton also wants to weigh in, I believe, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, if I may. You, you just brought up the idea regarding staff, and you talked about determining jurisdiction. Is it a County employee or a City employee? My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they are Blueprint employees.
Yeah.
They are not City or County employees. That, that, that is only for purposes of benefits. They're, they're an employee of a separate legal entity and not the City or the County. And that applies to several, the Consolidated Dispatch Agency, the CRA. They are, they're separate, it's a separate legal entity, and they're employees of that entity, not the City. And those entities have not endorsed, adopted the City's Ethics Code, so there'd be no jurisdiction for the Independent Ethics Board, because the Ethics Board's jurisdiction is limited to the Code of Ethics, and those entities haven't adopted the Code of Ethics. Am I, maybe I'm misunderstanding things, but that's, that's a little bit of my concern. Thank you.
It's, it's sort of a blurred line, to be honest, and I think even for HR and everybody, it's a blurred line. For example, the other day, I taught new employees in Ethics Training, and there were two Blueprint people in the class who were sent and told that they had to be in the class. I think
But, Mr. Floyd, just because Blueprint staff or CRA staff or anyone strongly suggests and sends them to Ethics Training to make them better employees, does not necessarily signal that they are a City employee or a County employee, correct?
I understand that, and the, you know, but you, at the same time, you have people like, people in your planning department, in UPI, your development department, who are procurement people. They are City employees, but they're doing CRA business. So, that, you know, situations like that could make it a case-by-case basis.
Madam Attorney?
Well, the case is that we have service agreements with each of these entities.
Correct.
So, it is not that they are employees of the, of the City. They are just being paid to do services, and we have contracts for those services.
Are you saying that for, and I'm, I'm trying to understand, because, you know, I'm, you know, last night, I was watching a CRA meeting, and Wayne Tetter, Mitch McGraw, Sherry Curtis, these are all City employees, providing services to CRA in planning, design, implementation, and, you know, full process. So, and these are City employees, and they're providing services to the CRA. So, they're actually, they're acting on somebody's behalf, but they are City employees. And so, they get information that's non-public, and, because some of them are procurement officers. So, so I'm looking at real scenarios.
Let me jump in, and then I'll come back to you. I don't know which CRA meeting you were watching, but we went through a full search for a new CRA Director. And as of October 1st, Mr. Stephen Cox is now the CRA Director, not Mr. Tetter. I would sit down and say, from a non-legal standpoint, when you look at the fact that the CRA generates its own revenue, okay, and the salaries and the benefits of those CRA employees are being paid through that revenue stream, not the City of Tallahassee revenue, they are employees of the CRA. Now, the CRA does contract with certain City Services. They contract with the City Attorney's Office to provide legal services to the CRA, okay? So, in that case, they are operating under the CRA as a City employee. But the individuals that you just mentioned are actual CRA employees that are being paid by a revenue stream generated within that governing body. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
That's correct, Mayor.
It's complicated.
It is.
Don't believe what you see, okay?
Yes, sir.
Watch the right me.
Commissioner Matlow?
And, and I'll bring it up more later, but I don't think we're going to solve the problems that Blueprint at this table. You know, Blueprint is largely an unaccountable entity. It doesn't have any HR policies, which we discovered recently. There's so many checks and balances that need to be put on Blueprint. I just don't think we're equipped right here to solve that particular issue.
Yeah, good point. Commissioner Williams Cox, and then we're coming back to Commissioner Porter.
I would say that this workshop is scheduled from 10 to 12.
Correct.
And it's 11:30 now.
Correct.
And I'm trying to determine, what is, what is our goal here today? Are we expected to make a decision on something today? Are we just going to talk about it, or what? Because by 12 o'clock, my sugar level will be very low, and when that happens, I'm not a good person. So, I just want to know, do I need to go grab something? Because we're going to be here for a long time, past 12.
Commissioner Williams Cox, that is a great question. It's the will of the Board. Yes, it's a workshop. We can have an incredible discussion and, you know, have, have a continued discussion later. If this Board wants to take action, we can take action. If this Board wants to extend the time past noon, we can have that discussion as well. I'll keep all the options on the table. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, and I'm wrapping up my comments. And I, I agree, I mean, I think that we're not going to resolve all these issues now. In the future, I think two hours was never going to be enough to have this meeting. These are complex issues, so if we have this again, I would like to see more time. My final comments are really just that I, I've, I've thought about it a lot. I've, I've heard a lot of opinions around the table. You know, in general, generally speaking, I'm comfortable with, with all of the recommendations that the Board has made and moving forward with them. So, I'll just put that on the table. And whether we make, whether we vote on adopting those now or at a meeting, whichever is fine with me. I also support, for future discussions, and I know you guys have been working on this stuff for a year, you know, a year or two, I, other recommendations have been made. You know, I would support a lifetime ban on lobbying for anyone convicted of honest services fraud. I would support disqualifying vendors that use unregistered lobbyists. I, I do think we have a serious issue, and I don't think it's, it's in our past. I think it continues, and it will, it can continue if, if we don't send a very strong message against this. Those are my feelings about it. I know that an ethics ordinance does not make people ethical. It doesn't change what people are going to try to do. I think for, for many people, for most people, it will act as a deterrent, not for all people. But I do think we need to meet this moment as aggressively as possible. And so, there are other things that I would consider, including, or ordinances that we pass. I know we're just considering these really today, but I, I am supportive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? The mayor had to. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor pro tem. Let me start by saying, first of all, thank you all for the work. Thank you to the citizens who do this voluntarily. So, thank you for the work that you do, and, Mr. Floyd, and all of you. I just have a couple of things I want to say, and I've said this before. We cannot legislate ethics. We can come up with any and everything that we think, and someone will violate, someone will break the law, and they're, they are being punished, and they will be punished for it. But you've got to, you've got to come to the table as an ethical person in the first place, or none of this is going to work. Second of all, I want to speak about whistleblower. I think that to create another avenue for whistleblower will cause confusion. And if there was a need or desire for the Independent Ethics Board to do whistleblower, I would have preferred to have heard about that prior to the City developing a policy and adopting it. So, if, I'd like to see this weather out, to see how it goes, and see where it goes before we determine that we need, need it in another place. And you all know that I talk about data all the time, but you've got to, you, you can't keep piling on, piling on. You've got to get some results and then see where to go next. And so, my thought on, on the whistleblower is, let's give what we just put in place an opportunity to mature and see where it goes. And then, if there is a gap, or if there is a need, then let's look at, look at that. And what is, what is, what does the federal, what is the federal law about whistleblower? What's this, what is the State of Florida using? I know that this is a City government, and we're doing different things, but ultimately, we've got to report to or align with what the State of Florida is doing, what the federal government is doing, because we can't have anything that supposes what they're doing. So, what does, Madam Attorney, what, what is, what, what does the state law require for whistleblower or federal law?
Well, the state provision basically sets forth a report to, they have Inspector Generals as well that, that examine these matters. And ultimately, there is a determination, I believe now it may go to the, it may go to the Human Relations Board for hearing, I'm, I'm not totally clear on that, but it's essentially the same process we have set up. So, you, you have an investigation that's done by an Inspector General, and then it goes on to another impartial board to make a decision and a recommendation. Then, it comes back to the government to make a final decision. Ultimately, you can always go to court on these matters. You don't, before the City actually had a process, the employee could go directly to court when they maintained that they had been retaliated because they really were a whistleblower. So, essentially, we have the same process, but it's just different forums.
So, our process mirrors what the State of Florida is currently doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My next item is, we're required to have so many hours of Ethics Training annually. Is the Ethics Board required to do that as well?
We're required to coordinate it.
Are you required to take it or participate in it?
In the, you mean, in the state four-hour training?
Period, whatever our requirement is, are you all bound by that requirement as well? Because as a Board, you're reviewing and making determinations about whether someone or something was ethical, but are you participating in that level of training, not, I mean, for your Board members, so that they recognize, or are able to recognize something that may have happened unethically? And what happens when, when, if the Board members are unethical? Who determines that? Who, who does the Board report to? The people. But guess what? The Commission reports to the people, too. But we also subject it to the Ethics Board. So, where is your covering, or where is your, who do you report to? I mean, are you getting trained so that you, I'll stop talking so you can answer?
Sure. As far as the training, we all participate in, creating, the training y'all experience was a result of all the Board working on that training. You know, Mr. Floyd put it together, we reviewed it thoroughly to make sure it covered all the issues we have to address. As far as who we, who we report to, well, if there's any issue, the Board can remove a member. And also, we're all appointed by different parties. Some people report to FAMU, FSU, those entities can remove members if they believe they're not serving properly. And there's two people, myself and Ms. Costa, who are appointed by the Board itself. So, there's oversight outside. Yeah, we're not elected officials, but there are people appointing us. We're not self-appointed or disposition.
I'm, I'm aware, I'm just, and I know how this works. Lord N M is not going to do anything to Brian as long as no one makes a complaint, because this work, nobody wants to do. So, thank you all for volunteering. So, they just would get, have to get up and get somebody who can do it.
Yeah.
But I wasn't clear on your answer regarding training for the Board.
There is, there's no requirement, we take it, or we review it, we see it. There's nothing, if you want to make the requirement, that's fine by us.
Because my thought is, you see it, you approve it, but you don't feel it. We feel it. We're bound by it. As I've said before, no one can give me a bottle of water, because I can't take gifts. And that's okay. But I need you to understand, so that when you're determining what, what adjustments to make going down the road, you will have sat through it, you will have thought about it, you would have felt it, so that you'll understand when there's an overreach, possibly, or when there's an underreach, possibly. But unless you're sitting in that space and getting that training, you don't know that. You're just looking at it as an approver or supervisor of, but never a participant. So, I do recommend that the Ethics Board participate in your own training, so that you can understand from our eyes what we see and what we do. And I've done the Ethics Training that Mr. Floyd has provided. I've done what the League of Citizens has provided, which is based on the State of Florida, because I want to do, I want to do the right thing. But for those who don't want to do the right thing, we can't stop them, but we can fix it when they do. So, I'm just saying, I, I hope you would take my recommendation and participate in your own training. The other thing, I was sitting here listening about if there's no probable cause, but then there could be a letter that says, or, am I misunderstanding that? That if there's no probable cause, then dismissed, done, no record of it?
Mm-hmm. No letter.
Okay. I, I said that wrong? Okay, could you correct me?
If, 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 if we don't find legal sufficiency, there's no further action. If we do an investigation and there's no probable cause, it's dismissal and no further action.
Okay, it's dismissed, but is there any written record of it that is attached with my profile?
There is a, a written record of, of the final decision.
Okay. The problem I have with that is, someone who goes out there and Google and sees that there's a, there's been an ethical complaint filed against Commissioner Williams Cox, and that there's a letter, they may not take the time to read that letter, determine that there was no, no finding.
That's, that's administrative process, that's, that's, that's beyond us even, that's, that's
That's beyond your pay grade.
No, that's, in, any administrative hearing process, you're going to have a record of the entire process. You're going to have a record of whether you dismissed it or whatever you did with it. You're going to have final orders. That's, that's just part of the administrative process.
Yeah, but, Mr. Floyd, I think what my colleague is saying is, there's a difference between having the final order of, "This is the dismissal, and this was the process, and this is how it went through," versus, "Here's the final order, this is the process that we went through, it was dismissed, but we still think you should."
And we're saying, "We're not doing that."
That's the, that's what's unclear on our part.
Yeah, we keep saying, "We're not doing that."
Okay.
"We're not doing that." "We're not doing that."
Okay, I'm almost there. Lobbyist registration. Lobbyist registration. I would think that someone who is a real lobbyist, who, who makes money being a lobbyist, will file whatever they need to file, wherever they need to file it, at whatever level they need to file it, because that's how they make money. What I don't want to be responsible for is myself keeping a log of lobbyists and whether they're, they, whether they're registered or not. I think Mr. Cook's office can handle that. And I think that, like my colleagues say, a sign out front saying you must be a registered lobbyist if you, if you're coming to lobby, uh, should be sufficient. I am busy trying to help people make dinnertime decisions. And lobbyists make a lot of money, and the people that I'm working with don't. So I'd rather spend my time trying to deliver services to them as opposed to trying to protect the lobbyists. And, and so I don't want to be responsible for keeping a log for lobbyists who comes here to talk to me. And I can count on one hand how many lobbyists in almost four years have come to talk to me. One of them's in the room now because he's no longer a lobbyist. I've seen him more, more times than not, Max Hurley. But other than that, lobbyists don't think I have anything to offer, and I'm glad.
We're not asking you to keep a log. That, the contact log is for the lobbyists to maintain themselves if they, whenever they meet with you is to maintain a log and report that to a clerk. What I'm asking you is when, we're avoiding the arguments of ignorance that we didn't know that person was a lobbyist. We're asking you to ensure if somebody comes before you to discuss an issue, is this person a lobbyist or not? You don't have to maintain a log if you want to, that's up to you. But we're not asking you to, the commissioners themselves to maintain a log of who they made. The contact log is for the lobbyists to maintain themselves and to provide the clerk within three days of the activity.
Okay, well, I'm glad for that clarification. That's not what I understood.
But Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in real quick, Commissioner, you are asking us to ensure that they register.
Right.
And so if they don't, then we can be held accountable.
And, and I think that Ms. Porter made a good point with that. Um, and, you know, we're flexible with, in terms of, of addressing, because you're right, by using the word ensure, you create consequences.
Correct.
So, but, you know, the, the intent still matters. We can work with the language.
I think we've all been in this situation before where somebody comes and sits down to talk to us, and we say, hey, have you registered yet? And they said, I wasn't, I haven't registered yet. I'm doing it on my way out the door as soon as we're done talking. Okay, please make sure you register on the way out the door. First meeting, okay? So we asked, they said they're going to, and they don't. Okay? I don't think that's ever happened, but what if they don't? What if they forget? Or what if they don't? Is that, how does that play out with the language that's being proposed? Are we held accountable for that?
I don't think.
It's, it's something to think about.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, I don't think there's any, any, any language to create a consequence, but I still think that that language could be solved.
Okay. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you still have the floor. I'm sorry.
And I'm, and I'm coming in for a landing because it's almost 12 o'clock. I just want to say that I think that we all should be held to a higher standard because we, we agreed to do this work, and I have no problem with that. But I do believe that in 2019, we did some major work, major work. And here we are, not quite three years later, and we're, we're not, we're not reporting data on how we're doing with what we did. We're saying we need you to do more. And I'm okay with that if that's what we need to do. But let's be reasonable, and let's think about down the road, not right now. And I don't want to continue to be held and paid and having to pay for what somebody did before I got here. I have nothing to do with that, and I'm not going to do those kinds of things. So let's think about that, you know, the reasonable person, you know, I'm okay with let's check in with ethics however many, however often we need to check in, but sometimes we can do it prematurely. And if there's already an overarching, like the state of Florida has something that we can, we can use, utilize or piggyback on, to me, that's resourceful. But I don't want ethics to become politicized. I know I'm too late for that. But what we can do is make sure we do what the citizens of the city of Tallahassee, what they believe they, they ask us to do. And I look around this room, I see some citizens, but I don't see nearly as many as who voted for. I voted for, and I plan to uphold, uphold it. But what I'm saying is, let's give what we've done time to settle. Let's reevaluate, and let's see where the gaps are and see what we need to do. But in the meantime, the overarching ethics commission is in place if we do something that we shouldn't, shouldn't be doing. So that's all I have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, it is 11:57. Obviously, I want to give plenty of time for Commissioner Matlow's questions and comments and the mayor pro tem. And so we're going to go over a little bit, but when, when, when we're done, we're done, okay? Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interestingly, there, there are a lot less people here than the last ethics workshop we had. But I'm glad we all are able to attend today. So I'll, I'll just go down the list. The lobbyist registrations or the lobbyist definitions, I support that. I mean, I do think we need to zone in on, zoom in on penalties and holding people accountable as well as informative to, you know, things like realtors and communications consultants and all those things that we, we've seen before. We talked a lot today about if somebody talks to us about a, a commission vote that's coming before, but, but many times, the lobbyists don't even come to the commission. They can just work at the staff level to try to get something on the agenda. So we need to make sure we're not just thinking about who's communicating with commissioners, but, you know, every step of the way when you're trying to influence the process or final outcome of government, it's, it's included as well. I think, I tend to think the current definition covered a lot of people, and they should be registering, but I do think the suggested definition makes it very clear who you are and, and what you need to do. So I can support that. On misuse of position, I support those changes. I, I had some concerns about the remedial actions. I, I think the questions earlier kind of addressed my concerns of, of whether that would be. It seems like it's somewhat of a deferred prosecution agreement where there's some sort of admission. So if you are, that penalty, so to speak, of that letter is probably warranted if you, you make that agreement, but you still have the ability as an individual to, to defend your name at, at any time. That's correct, okay. Then that, I'm okay with that. I guess I can touch this since it's been voted. Jurisdiction of the ethics board, I agree that we're a legislative body, we're not a judicial body. So I do think our role is just to decide where, where to go from here. As I, I said in previous meetings, I do support expanding the jurisdiction. If we want to take things that are more complicated like blueprint and, and take those up at those board meetings specifically, but I do think as a, a city commission, we can likely say what the CRA would do. So I would recommend that we explore bringing the CRA board and the CRA staff under the purview. I think just the five of us at our table can put that into motion. Whistleblower protections, we've heard two different arguments. It was mentioned in the, sorry if I'm going fast, I know I'm trying to respect time. Whistleblower protections, the example given was Palm Beach with Inspector General and an ethics board both delivering it. Do we have any, how does that work for them? Have they've had issues where those two conflicted or?
Neither. The one we talked to was Miami date, and do they have issues? No, because they, they, they put together a process and where it works for both of them. And they're able to, they understand the concept of confidentiality, which is a huge part of whistleblower. So, you know, that's, that's actually what we looked at.
Okay. And, and if this moved forward with the expansion, what education component is there for people to know who they should be going to first, or should they be going to two different? And I'll give you a chance to respond also.
It's frankly, it's, it's not much different from what we do now. When we, when, you know, and, and I did talk with Mr. Sutton, and I thought it was a little ironic when he, um, he, he mentioned he was concerned about confusion because that was, I had to, I wasn't laughing at him, I was laughing at us, because that was our reaction when he became inspector general. We thought, and there were going to be two hotlines. We thought there were going to be confusion, but we both committed to working together, and, and we didn't have that. I think it's just a matter of, we, we would have to, this is not something you can just decide today. It would take both of us sitting down and coming up with a process that we're both comfortable with. I, I think that that really, more than anything, is the deciding point, whether we can come up with something together that we're comfortable with and that would, and trust would not compromise the other.
That's kind of.
If I may, I spoke to John Kerry, the inspector general for Palm Beach, and it's not that John Kerry. But, but he, he explained to me that in Palm Beach also, they have not had problems with whistleblower with both at the ethics board and the inspector general. However, he did mention Miami, and he talked about the difference between Palm Beach and Miami, and that, that providing whistleblower protections takes some kind of judgment as to whether a complaint is worthy of whistleblower protection or not. And he explained that Palm Beach is much more restrictive. They, they, their, their take is that whistleblower protections are for very serious issues, whereas Miami, he explained, they're much more permissive on, in giving out whistleblower protection. So in, in Palm Beach, they have never had an instance that he is aware of where their ethics board has received a complaint that rose to the level of whistleblower. So even though there is protections there, it's never, it's never come up as an issue because there has not been a complaint at the ethics board that rose to that level. And I think that that's something that maybe Dwight and I should talk about offline as to, you know, what level of complaint would rise to a whistleblower complaint? Because whistleblower is a serious matter. It's not just every run-of-the-mill complaint that comes in that would qualify for whistleblower protections. And we'd want to have some kind of an understanding as to what types of complaints would or would not rise to the level of requiring or necessitating whistleblower protection.
Okay. Thank you both. I, I think that conversation needs to move forward, but I think we need to flush out exactly, you know, what, what that looks like for understanding. A few other issues that, that I wanted to raise today were, were anytime we piggyback contracts or enter into no bid land sales, I think what we're seeing now is when, when staff is entering into extensive conversations with realtors or if they're lobbyists, we don't know, with the intent to get a city commission vote months down the line, I think, one, those folks seem to be registered to be lobbyists. But I don't think if it's a months drawn out process, we can really say we received an unsolicited, unsolicited offer. You know, especially locally, we have, we have many realtors and, and real estate firms that really engage in, in the political process on, on, on all merits. I need, I want to make sure we're, we're covering that, and I think we need to update two of our policies. And I'm not going to make a motion for any of these today, but I do intend on our March 9th meeting to bring these for consideration. The first would be our real estate policy. I think we should update it to require a city commission agenda item. Anytime a realtor or lobbyist expresses interest in property that's not currently listed for sale, and then give the city commission the, to decide if they want to entertain unsolicited offers or if they want to put it out for RFP or just decide that it's not available. Secondly, this year, we've been contacted, or our office has been reached out to by at least two entities that were concerned about piggyback contracts. You know, they wanted their companies to have the opportunity to compete in those specific projects. So I think if we're going to piggyback contracts, we should have two meetings. The first meeting, just explaining the intent to do it, and then have a city commission vote to either bring back a, a piggyback contract for approval or enter into an RFP. A lifetime ban on lobbying for anyone convicted of honest services fraud, I support that. Disqualifying vendors that use an agency lobbyist, I support that. The, I also support board member training of the ethics training to make sure we're all, we're all on the same page that may already be part of what you're doing through preparing the agenda items, but that point does resonate to make sure we're all exploring the same rules. But as far as, I just wanted to make my intent, because we've been having this conversation for months and months and months, and it seems like it's not the time to vote on that today. It's not the time to vote. It'll be the time to vote at the commission workshop. So I just wanted to, on March 9th, I don't want there to be any surprises when I make these motions and look for support. But today, I do want to make a motion that we go ahead and schedule the introduction of ordinance for the lobbyist recommendations or the misuse of position changes or... Well, I'll leave that, and I'll do the other one separately.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is for the recommendation for the misuse of position. Madam Attorney, why don't you give us a quick rundown one more time so that we're all on the same page of what we're discussing and voting on?
On the misuse of position, I believe the request is to add inconsistent with the duties and responsibilities, which is a part of the definition that currently exists in state law. That would be the request on misuse of position.
Was there another one that I'm missing?
What about the term proper performance?
Yes.
Yes.
Inconsistent with the proper performance, as they have stated it, is, is what they're asking.
Is consistent with state law definition.
Let me, let me take a look at the provision. I know in general it is, but the specifics.
Mayor, if I may, I, I think.
Mr. Cook.
Their language uses that word proper performance that you asked about, and their draft ordinance in section 2-8 would say his or her official duties in a manner inconsistent with the proper performance of his or her office. That's the language that if Commissioner Matlow is moving to their language, that's what would be added.
Correct.
And that's consistent with the state language? Is that?
I believe they have represented that it is consistent with the interpretation in state law.
Mr. Reed, is that your opinion as the?
Not, it's not at the level that the term corruptly would provide.
Right.
But it's closer to where the case law is than where the existing ordinance is today.
All right. There's a motion on the table made by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second to the motion?
I seconded it.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, just, just for clarity, there, there's a full draft ordinance proposed that includes other sections. I just want to make sure you're clear on you, are you referring to section 2-8 of the markup or the entire ordinance? I share that just because they, in your agenda material, you have an entire draft ordinance that has other sections and other content.
Yep, that, that was, that was my question as well, Commissioner Matlow.
Correct. It would be the draft ordinances listed as recommendations by the board and the agenda items. So that's 2-RD1, 200-RD2, and 21-RD01. If it's helpful, I'll amend the motion to allow the attorney to review and bring them back as an agenda item before the introduction.
Certainly.
Motion's been amended.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I, I'll wait for the amendment because I want to have discussion.
I'm sorry.
I want to have discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Second, okay. So I am trying to understand why would we not go back to corruptly?
Right.
Since there's more case law that could help make the case as opposed to going halfway there and then two years later, we'll be coming to go back, go all the way up. Why don't we just go back to where we were? Is there any reason, any good reason why we wouldn't?
Well, from a procedural standpoint.
Commissioner Reed, I mean, Attorney Reed.
I don't, I don't need the promotion. I, I would say if, if the motion carries to put this on the agenda, I don't think there would be anything prohibiting you from proposing an amendment to the ordinance as presented at your March meeting to go back to corruptly. I know that's an issue that we've discussed quite a bit, and the board just made a conscious decision not to go back to corruptly.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
So if we accept the motion that's on the table, and I'm looking at Madam Attorney, what, what are we in essence doing?
That's what I want to know.
So in essence... So, in essence, what you're doing is you're adopting partially the standard that is in the state statutes. So the state statutes speak of two items or elements. One is made with wrongful intent and inconsistent with the duties and responsibilities of the office. What we're saying here is they're maintaining the new or should-have-known instead of wrongful intent, but they are adopt, they're recommending the adoption of inconsistent with duties and, public duties and responsibilities. So it's, as they said halfway there, I think really, and certainly this is the recommendation I made in 2019, it is of greater assistance to the commission, and also certainly to your legal counsel, to give you advice based on legal precedent. There is plenty of legal precedent interpreting corruptly. And so my recommendation is to go back to the corrupt, corruptly standard, so that you have precedent that sort of can guide your decisions, which is most important, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And let me just say that I agree with you. I don't like that the halfway there, either we're there or we're not. So I agree with your opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And by the way, on point, the motion is not to adopt now. It's for you to bring back an item. So let's have that conversation. Commissioner Matlow, do you want to have the item be brought back with the term corruptly?
So on that point, the larger conversation we had in 2019 was, is the standard of corruptly too great to actually meet legally? So when we look at legal precedents, yes, there are, but how bad did you have to be to be corrupt? But I think the intent to change the language to, if you're doing something wrong, if it's inconsistent with what you should be doing, you know that's wrong. To have a standard at a level that's not anything you do going to a ribbon-cutting, because, you know, I believe we all do that, and, you know, our intent there isn't to do anything, any type of influence. But if it's something that's inconsistent with what you're supposed to be doing, I do think that creates a standard that's not such a high bar to meet, but also a high enough bar to know you shouldn't have been doing it.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner Matlow, I feel, I feel what you're saying, but this is all about us being held to a higher standard. So if we're going to be held to a higher standard, then let's go all the way, is my thought. Well, we're here talking about ethics. We're not depending on me to be ethical. We're, we have rules and laws to make sure that I'm ethical. So, let's go back to where we were in the beginning, and let's level set, and see where it goes. That's what, that's what I'm thinking. There's plenty of case law, according to Madam Attorney. I'm not an attorney, I stated how they expressed before, but that doesn't make me an attorney. And she's saying that there's plenty of case law. If I'm going to be accused of something, I want there to be plenty of case law to exonerate me. I don't want something that's experimental, okay? So that's where I am.
On point.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is what they're recommending is the higher standard. Thank you.
Correct.
How is that higher than corruptly?
The reason we've lowered it, we've got it corruptly, and this commission thought it wise to that point, was corruptly was too high of a standard for us to find violation. That's where we're arguing. Not that it's holding you to a higher standard, it's holding us to a higher standard of finding violations. We'll have to, if you lower to, if you include the misuse of proper, of public office, it will allow you to continue to do what you're elected to do, serve your community, without fear of violating. You raise it corruptly, it may hinder our ability to finally address those issues where our violation is found. The misuse is part of the state interpretation statute. But the issue we had when we addressed corruptly was that was too high of a standard to find violations. We're asking you to work with us and find a middle ground here, that we can address those issues where the, where stepping out the response, stepping outside the bounds of responsibilities as a public officer, those that we're trying to identify. But not to such a high standard that we could never find a violation, because to find intent, to find what you were thinking, that eliminates a reasonable person issue. We're trying, if you're, if you want to apply the reasonable person standard, this will get you to that standard, which is, I think, the manager, the city manager management is a reasonable standard, person's standards what we have. This will keep it there, allow us to address those issues that, you know, go beyond what you're doing, beyond cutting ribbons and serving your community. We want to address those, we want to address the real violations. This will help us adjust, direct our resources towards those real violations of the ethics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will bring this one in for Landon. The motion on the table is for this item to actually come back to us, and that the Madam Attorney is going to be bringing it back. Madam Attorney, I am sure that you will bring back an analysis, both on what's being recommended by the Ethics Board, and also analysis going back to the original language that we had. And then we will have a healthy discussion and a vote at the commission meeting on that proposal. So with that, are we comfortable taking a vote on the motion on the table? Okay. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the last two items, which, which aren't quite as fleshed out, I'll move that we have agenda items come back to pursue expanding the Ethics Board's jurisdiction to include the CRA, and how we would have to work with the CRA to do that, as well as an agenda item specifically on the expansion of whistleblower protections. And I would hope that the Inspector General and the Ethics Officer would be able to come to some sort of agreement when that comes back.
On point, do we need to be sitting as the CRA to bring up the CRA issue?
I would recommend that you do, since it is a separate and independent board.
Commissioner Matlow, would you be comfortable bringing that up at the CRA meeting next week?
I think, well, I would be. But my question is, for us, for, the CRA can't direct the expansion of the Ethics Board. So would it have to come from the city, or would we have to reach out to the CRA to express our intent and have them agree?
I think you first have to come to your conclusion that you're going to disagree with your attorney, that the CRA members are subject to the, the board has jurisdiction, which the decision has already been made, I thought, that it was not subject to the jurisdiction.
But we're talking about, what I'm proposing is expanding the jurisdiction to include the board members and the staff members, so that would have to come from the CRA board?
Well, you have to get past the first hurdle, that the CRA board is, can be subject to the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board. And until you get to that decision first, which you would have to, which you have already made a decision at the last meeting, it would seem that you wouldn't present it before the CRA.
So I believe the decision that we made was based on what's currently being adopted. So an expansion, would that require a referendum, or would that be agreement, a referendum?
Yes, that's correct.
Initiated at the city or the CRA?
That would be a city issue.
Okay, then my motion would stand to bring back an agenda item to lay out the process to initiate a referendum to cover the CRA.
And this would be a charter review amendment that would go before the citizens?
That is correct.
All right. I am going to, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion, but I do, I am confused, because I supported this at the meeting. I guess I'm confused how this is different than what we voted on already.
That's what I want to know.
Well, what you voted was that the, essentially Blueprint and, and CRA are not subject to the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board.
But we took two votes.
Right.
Remember, the one about your opinion, and then a second during sharing of ideas.
Yes, and that was, that was, that was not passed.
Right. So my question is, is this motion different than the one that didn't pass?
I don't think it's any different from the one that didn't pass. My understanding was that there was an expression of a desire to pursue a referendum, and that did not pass.
Okay.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let me jump in real quick first. I'm not going to support the motion, because we already got the ruling of the Ethics Board, that they are already going to treat all matters before the CRA and Blueprint as if it's under their jurisdiction. It would actually take the action of the City Commission to say, "No, we disagree with that," and proactively put in, in ordinance that you do not have jurisdiction, okay? Now, that was the direction of the board the other day, on a 4-1. I was the one in, on a 3-1, and I was the one in dissent. But you don't need to make the motion, you have the interpretation that was said already, that they are going to treat all issues. So I'm not going to support the motion. Secondly, when it comes to whistleblower, that's going to take a charter change. I'm going to dig in, and I am not going to support any amendments to the charter or process until we have a healthy discussion on a full charter review committee and process, which is the standard for every municipality every 10 years or so. I think it's time for a full charter review, that of course, anything dealing with the Ethics Board can be part of that discussion and recommendation, but I'm not in the position to support amendments here and amendments there to go on, out of respect.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So on point, Commissioner Matlow.
On point, first point would be, the previous vote was in reference to expanding to include Blueprint, the mayor added the RTPA as well. So this, this motion refines it to just the CRA, since we don't have to discuss with county commissioners and people outside of the people sitting at this table. Also, I believe in...
Mitch Matlow, it was CRA. You had to recuse yourself and step out. It was CRA and it was Blueprint.
We're referring to the vote at the sharing of ideas to expand the jurisdiction.
Correct. And it was CRA and it was Blueprint, correct?
I thought it was both, but...
Yeah, it was.
I stand corrected.
And this one is just CRA?
It's fundamentally different, because the arguments against that motion were county commissioners would be included, as well as it was expressed that they felt the setting in the Ethics Workshop would be a more appropriate time.
I'll second it if it's just the CRA.
So the motion's on the floor with a second. But secondly, to, for clarification, they made a decision on board members, a decision on including the entire CRA staff. Has that been settled? Or would that be...
I think it's going to be a case-by-case.
Yeah, it would have to be a case-by-case basis. We'd have to see who the individuals are. I want to see a lot of issues. Who issues their W-2? Who has control over the employees' actions? Is there a chain of command that runs from maybe the city manager's office, through the place director, through to subordinate staff? And those are issues, they're all hypothetical, and we'd have to look at them individually to make that determination. And it doesn't, and we're not necessarily saying that we are going to find jurisdiction on these cases. We're just saying, we're not ruling it out. We're always going to look at every case on a case-by-case basis.
So as I said earlier, we tried to intentionally separate the operations of the CRA from the city manager's office. That was largely the practice before, when we hired the new director. I think there was an intent to separate it. But, but my concern of not being specific in updating the referendum to include the entire staff is, how does a staff member know if they're covered? If it's on a case-by-case basis? How do we train that CRA staff member not to accept gifts if they're not going through, through city training, because currently they're not required to? So the intent of the motion is to provide clarity, so nobody finds himself in a position in the future, especially at the staff level. And I do intend to pursue this conversation at Blueprint as well.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I want to get clarification from the city manager and the city attorney. These CRA, Blueprint, CRTPA, we serve as fiscal agents, the city serves as fiscal agents to these separate entities, for the purpose of HR and other services?
Commissioner, I can answer that. So we do, and not limited to those entities, sometimes provide HR services, back office services, and I think that's what Mr. Reed's talking about when we issued W-2. So some could be considered on payroll, but they're on the payroll through a funding mechanism of that originating agency. But it doesn't make sense for that agency to have its own HR, accounting, and other back office services. And that's, that's where we have the sharing agreements, that's what we have with CRA. CRA is entirely independent of the city management structure. It reports to the CRA board with an executive director and all the staff and staff of CRA. We provide HR services, accounting services, and a variety of things for which they pay through a sharing agreement. So I think, I think that answers your question.
Right. And I think there may have been some confusion, because Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter served in an interim role just until we, since October, have an executive director who now is at the helm and drives that separate entity. Much like Blueprint has its own staff, CRTPA has its own staff as well. So I just want that to be clear for anyone who may be listening, that yes, the city does provide services, HR services, but you are really a fiscal agent to help them, in backroom services, to help them do the things that they do, so we don't have, they don't have to have that staffing. It's a cost savings for them to not have to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it one motion or two motions on the table?
It's a single motion.
Single motion, okay. All those in favor of the motion, restart.
Motion restart.
Sure.
It says two items in that one motion.
Correct. Two separate items. One is the, Commissioner Matlow, let me see if I get it right. Correct me if I'm wrong. The first item is the jurisdiction expansion to include CRA, Blueprint.
No, just CRA and CRA staff.
Okay. And then the second item is the whistleblower item.
Correct. And I would suggest that those be separated, that we not take up two very separate items in one motion. That doesn't make sense.
I'm happy to vote, vote on them.
All right. Motion's on the table. All those in favor, signify by...
On point. I'll withdraw the previous motion and motion just to bring back the agenda item for a referendum to expand the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board to cover the CRA and CRA staff.
All those in favor of the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Yes, seconded.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Are we all clear with the motion that's on the table?
No, I'm not. I'm serious, I'm not.
Sure.
So Commissioner Matlow, do this for me. Turn this way, every station motion.
We would, we would have the city attorney's office prepare an agenda item laying out the process to go to referendum, to expand the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board to cover all members and staff of the CRA. So this would be the agenda item, coming back to discuss it.
And with this agenda item coming back to discuss it, we're just looking at, we're not making any commitments, we're just looking at what it would take, what are the steps to do this?
That's what, that's what we'll be voting on today, yes, just to look at it.
Okay.
Well, the steps are, Commissioner Williams-Cox, is that it would come before a formal City Commission rating, and we have the ability to put something on the ballot, as long as it's far enough out that makes the timelines of the election cycle. So this could come before the City Commission technically, and if the majority of the board wanted to move forward, then it would go on, I'm assuming the November ballot, because we do have plenty enough time, and ask the referendum question to the citizens of Tallahassee about jurisdiction. Again, my position is, I'm not supporting any piecemeal approach until we, until we at least have a healthy conversation about the possibility of a full charter review for the city of Tallahassee. So, all those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
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 And it fails, I believe, three to two, with the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and Commissioner Williams-Cox in dissent. Commissioner Matlow?
I'll make a motion that we bring back and ask Inspector General to work with the Ethics Officer to bring back an agenda item to explore whistleblower protections and how that would interact with, with both boards.
Once again, is that a charter amendment that would need to take place? Help me out here, Madam Attorney.
Mayor, I have looked at this item. I do realize, according to the research that was done by the Ethics Board, that they noted that the Attorney General has said that certainly a Ethics Board can be an appropriate official. However, there still needs to be review of the actual charter provision. I've examined the provisions of Palm Beach County, as well as the city of Jacksonville. In both of those cases, it was not done by referendum, it was actually done by ordinance of, of the county. So in this instance, it would appear to me that there's still a jurisdictional issue, because the Ethics Board was established as a result of a referendum, and it was not established by an ordinance that was in the, placed in the charter, like these other jurisdictions. So in my opinion, again, we have the same problem, where we would have to have a referendum to give this authority to the Ethics Board.
So Commissioner Matlow, to put this in the proper format, then the motion would be to bring back an item, not only defining the whistleblower item, but to also lay out how to put it on... how to put it on as referendum to move forward. That would be part of the agenda item because we couldn't just adopt it, it would have to go before referendum.
Right. So yeah, the first step for me would be, I think that'd be a couple steps down the line, just to have the Inspector General and the Ethics Board present to us how this could work. And then I think the next step would be how to- But I don't think it's anywhere near the point of saying we need to put this to referendum. I'd just like more information. We've heard some from the Inspector General today from his concerns and we've heard from the Ethics Board. I'd like them to have the opportunity to collaborate and let us know if this even makes sense before we start. I'm really much in love with that.
Well, I am comfortable personally with the Inspector General's, not that I agree or disagree, but you flat out said if we're going to move in this fashion, then you would put the Inspector General responsibilities of the Ethics Board around the electeds in our offices and then who else? I'm sorry, Dennis?
The three areas where I do not have oversight responsibility with my whistleblower authority would be the city commission, the Inspector General's office, and the Ethics Board. Those are the three areas within city government for which my whistleblower protections do not or would not apply.
Right. And so I don't need any additional information. That's laid out pretty fair and simple.
But he doesn't have that.
I would support extending it to those three areas beyond that. I wouldn't be interested.
But regardless, what I'm hearing the attorney say is even if we're in full support of extending it amongst those three areas and the Ethics Board supports it as well, it's going to take a referendum in order for it to be implemented, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And my position stands on how I feel about referendums before we have a full commission discussion.
If I may, my issues with expanding the jurisdiction or authority of my whistleblower provisions is that I am not independent of the city commission, therefore would not be appropriate for me to receive complaints regarding city commissioners.
Sure. Right.
Nor would it be appropriate for me to receive complaints about my office.
Sure.
Or about the Independent Ethics Board. Those are the three areas where I have independence problems and it wouldn't be appropriate for me to take action or investigate those type of complaints.
Excellent. So bringing in for a landing, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. Has the Ethics Board had conversations about just that limited capacity of whistleblowers? To just oversee the city commission and Inspector General as opposed to greater expansion? Is that-
We have discussed that.
Yeah, we have.
We've discussed that.
We have, we have. And we're going to look into, and I would suggest you look into, I understand the attorney's statement at this point, and frankly, we disagree. We don't think it takes a referendum. And we can go back and present something with respect to that. But we have looked at limiting it to those.
Yeah, I'll just remind you again, this commission expanded the jurisdiction of this board to cover city employees. That wasn't a referendum, am I correct? That was a city ordinance that you guys did it through. As far as the Inspector General, I think the important part is the process. So I think it'll be important for us to work, Inspector General, to work with the process and one that you'll feel comfortable, the city commission, to vote on to determine the proper procedures of whistleblower protections being offered by the Independent Ethics Board.
Well, then, may I make a suggestion that we withdraw the motion and just allow the Inspector General and the ethics officers to, you clearly disagree with that opinion.
Which opinion?
That we should only-
Attorney's opinion.
Excuse me. Clearly disagree with the legal opinion that it does not take referendum to change.
Correct.
I'm also hearing that y'all had a conversation and disagree with the Inspector General, what he just said about filling in the gaps, or?
No, we actually had a positive conversation.
Does that mean you agree or just had a positive conversation heading in the right direction?
I think we said that would be, I think it would be a reasonable area for us to fill, a reasonable gap for us to fill. I think the, a couple of things. One, I think Mr. Sutton's done an exceptional job in the position, and I think Attorney Jackson and Inspector General Sutton did a great service for the city by codifying procedures for Inspector General because as Attorney Jackson stated previously, any individual had a complaint could just run to Circuit Court and this kept it in-house and created administrative remedies, which we think are important.
Right.
One of the concerns we've had is we are bound to, our complaints and subsequent investigations are confidential and exempt under Section 112.324, whereas his complaints and investigations are exempt under Sections 112.3188. And while there's a great deal of overlap, there are some areas where our issue, the confidentiality would lapse and then we are compelled under Chapter 119 to make those public, where they would not be public under his. And his confidentiality requirements actually have criminal penalties attached where ours do not. So I think the concern, I think our biggest recommendation would be that the offices coordinate in a way where we don't get tripped up and expose the city or anybody to any, or board, anybody to any liability in that way. So I don't think it's one person does a job and the other person does. And I think it's more there'd be a partnership as is seen in Palm Beach where the Inspector General and the Ethics Board work in conjunction.
So I do actually agree on the issue itself. Again, you have to convince me and the city attorney for that much, that it does not take a charter referendum in order to implement.
Okay.
So look, if it comes, if it passed, if this motion passes today to bring the item back, Madam Attorney, you're going to have to do the legal research and-
And we'll communicate.
Really come through with the recommendation of whether this can legally be done without or with, you know, is there some other way to do it? But I will not support, again, this item or any item in a piecemeal faction of amending the charter without a full discussion of charter review. I think I'm-
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The motion on the table does not get to the point of charter review. You know, a lot of times when we make decisions, we shouldn't be jumping to the final decision between one meeting and the next. We should really take the time to be deliberative, thoughtful, weigh in as an elected body to say the direction we'd like an item to go. But what I'm saying is-
Commissioner Matlow, I understand.
Is this motion is at, this issue is at the very bottom level. Maybe the answer is what Inspector General suggested to just oversee the commissioners. Maybe the Independent Ethics Board will meet with him and decide that that's what they want to explore also. But I'm not comfortable saying, let's go with that right now without having, giving it back to the Ethics Board, letting them decide what makes sense, letting our ethics officer meet with our Inspector General, and then come back to us to say, if we wanted to do something, this is what it would look like. Do you want to take a vote to explore how to make that a referendum or proceed to the legal analysis? We get stuck in a process at the city where we make decisions and it's tied up with a bow at the first step. And I think that's a big flaw in our government. So I'm saying this is so important, let's be deliberative, let's not try to rush it into a charter review committee. Let's let our staff work out some suggestions of how it could be helpful, and then let's take a vote to see if we even want to pursue it. So this vote isn't even pursuing anything today, it's just taking it to the next step to get us more information to make an informed decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow, nobody is disagreeing. I think that this is going to pass to come back to us for future consideration. Let's bring this in for a vote, folks. All those in favor of the motion-
No, 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 no. I raised my hand.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tim, absolutely.
Thank you. And I would disagree with you, Commissioner Matlow, that that's a flaw of our administration.
I agree.
I totally disagree with that.
You're right.
But that being said, I agree with you that this needs to come back, that the two, because the bottom line is we're doing what we feel is in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Tallahassee. And so if we can have both parties work together and come back with something that they can both agree on, then that's what we ought to be striving for. And I hear that both sides are saying we think we can get there. Once we do that, then the attorney will come back to us with whether or not this needs to go to a referendum. And then at that point, we decide if we want to move forward with that next step.
That's right.
But that's the next step in the process. And so I agree with Commissioner Matlow on that, and we'll support the motion.
Well said. Commissioner Williams-Cox, I was going to move on, but I let the mayor, Pro Tim, speak, and I know you had your hand up as well.
Well, you know, I'm ready for it to come in for a landing as well because it sounds like they're saying that they're going to talk.
Yes.
So let them talk. So what are we doing? Just officially voting that they can talk?
No, it's to come back to us.
I understand that, but I'm saying, what are we voting on right now? They can talk and come back to us, right? Okay, so we need a motion for that? So if we do, then okay, let's do it.
All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioner Matlow, you start off the floor.
That's it for me today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim?
The only thing I had, Mr. Mayor, we talked about the Scrivener's error, and I heard both the Inspector General and the attorney that they disagreed with the Ethics Board. And so how do we, how do we resolve that, those differences?
Well, if you want to make a change, if you want to make the provision more expansive to cover more than just covered individuals, then you would need to change the language that currently exists. If you're satisfied with the language as it is and the fact that the state covers all people regarding information, you can keep it as it is.
Okay. I would like to see us keep it as it is. I don't-
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion. That we keep the language as it currently exists in ordinance.
All right. Motion's on the table, made by the mayor, Pro Tim, signed by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes three two with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
Is it okay if I just make a quick point on that issue, maybe before the vote?
Sure. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
If I could just make a point on the vote that just took place, I was trying to get your attention before the vote. If you go to the section dash two dash seventeen, the very opening language says a public official or employee of the city, which is as broad as it gets. And then in the second half, it changed it to covered individuals, and that's what we refer to as a Scrivener's error. What we did is we simply said that the, a public official or employee of the city would simply be repeated to make it very clear over whom this section applies. If the board wishes this to only apply to covered individuals, I would recommend that the opening language also be changed. So it'd say, a covered individual shall not disclose, and then you could keep the existing language and the ordinance to be covered individual. I think it needs to be either apples or it needs to be oranges, but, and that's a policy decision to be made by you.
And I would have no objection to changing that to covered individuals when we bring this back.
All right. Is this going to take a second motion or, what, put us in the right parliamentary procedure? Because I know we just solidified the language in place. So are you looking for a second motion now?
Yes, please make a second motion.
Okay.
I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we make it any covered individual.
To substitute the term, public official or employee, to insert covered individual instead.
Covered individuals.
Okay. That's the motion.
Excellent. Motion is on the table by the mayor, Pro Tim. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner, I had Commissioner Porter and then Commissioner Matlow, I believe. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, forgive my confusion. I thought that we had voted to bring back the Ethics Board recommendations, three draft ordinances, which included this. Am I wrong? I thought we were voting to bring that back and now we just voted no?
No, ma'am. The motion on the table was specifically towards the language.
Not this motion, earlier in this meeting.
My understanding was the misuse of position.
Right.
Okay. So we only voted to bring back that one thing?
That's true.
Okay, great.
All right. Commissioner Matlow?
Just for clarity, the Scrivener's error language, which ordinance is that written in?
So, and I misunderstood. I thought we had identified the ordinances to be considered as 20 dash oh one.
Correct.
20 dash oh two and 21 dash oh one.
Great.
As we numbered them. And those are our own internal numberings, you're not bound to follow those in any way. The 21 ORD oh one includes three sections. One was the misuse of public position, the other one was the penalties and the dismissals of letters of instruction, and then the disclosure of non-public information. So whether that was just the one part of that proposed ordinance or whether it was the entire ordinance, I wasn't sure.
The intent of the motion was to bring back the proposed ordinances with, in their totality. But the motion on the table would edit the ordinance to change the language to covered individuals from cities. And I'll vote against that just because I think we need to be training, if you work for the city, we need to be training you not to misuse your position, Mr. City Manager, from the top to the bottom. So as far as looking and saying we want to cover less people, I can't support that today.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, if I could-
Speak to that.
I don't want to reach all the way down to someone who's in a ditch, digging ditches or, you know, cleaning stormwater, whatever, to be held accountable for getting some information and misuse. The chances of that happening, it's going to be very, very rare unless you're going to go out there and talk to them while they're doing it. I just, and I said this when we adopted this in 2019, hold us to the standard, but don't, I don't want the janitors and all these folks to be held to this kind of standard that we're going to be held to because they're just trying to do their jobs. We're just trying to do ours as well, but we have a greater responsibility. So I'm, you know, it sounds easy to say from the top to the bottom unless you're on the bottom. If you're on the bottom, then you don't need that undue pressure. You're trying to make dinnertime decisions. You don't, you, so I just want to say that because everybody matters. But there are those of us who have more room to be of danger because of what we know and think we know than those who are just trying to do their jobs. So I wanted to speak up for those employees that I don't think they should be brought into this.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Porter, you have your hand raised as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I was an intern at the CRA. If I had discussions with our CRA director and as a lowly intern called a developer, a realtor, I mean, you should be held responsible. That's my feeling. I don't think it puts people who are, you know, I understand the position, I don't think I'm going to change anyone's mind, but as an intern, I accepted that responsibility. And we should hold all of our city employees to that standard because all of them have in some way access, if they want to, to information that they can misuse. That's my position. Thank you.
Motion on table has been properly made by the mayor, Pro Tim, signed by Commissioner Williams-Cox. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And then passes three two with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. You have the floor, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim.
I'm done.
All right. I think we've had enough fun for the day and I think that this conversation will continue. I want to thank the chair, the ethics officer, Attorney Reed. I want to thank our team for all the hard work. Obviously, we got more work to do and I'm glad to see that we're heading in the direction and carrying on this conversation, which I'm sure will lead to future meetings as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, we had a few people who thought we voted on bringing back the three ordinance recommendations, and then we have others who said we voted on one part of one ordinance. So I think we need to clear that up before we-
Mr. Mayor, could you review again what the city, we consider in our next meeting, what you're taking up for a vote, for consideration from our recommendations, please?
I do not have a set agenda for any future meeting that may or may not, however-
What was voted on today? What was voted on today as far as consideration for future?
I got you, Mr. Chair. Madam Attorney, why don't you give us a rundown of the motions that were approved today? Or you can do approved or dismissed, either one. Or you can do approved or dismissed, either one.
My understanding is you wanted me to bring back recommended language on what is designated as 20-ORD 01, misuse of position, penalties, disclosure of non-public information. And in the last motion, we clarified that it would be a change from official and employee to covered individual.
Correct.
And then to sort of bring back an analysis on those items.
Correct.
And then we talked about the.
Yes.
Whistleblower.
Yes.
And that coming back.
Okay. That would be.
That, that's correct.
That would be presented by the.
Correct. Mr. Chair, are you clear?
And just to make sure, no consideration given on the issue of lobbying?
Not today.
Okay.
Yeah, wait, on point. So, the motion included the three draft ordinance recommendations by the Independent Ethics Board, which in our agenda item was laid out as ORD 1, ORD 2, ORD, or 21-ORD 1, which included those three and included the lobbyists. If, if that was not what we were voting on, I'll already state the motion as that.
That was not the motion as I understood it, and that's not the motion that passed as the attorney just.
I will second that motion.
Then I'll make a motion to.
All right. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody, just take a deep breath, real quick. I'm coming back to you, I promise you. Let's just, let's, let's, let's make sure. Madam Attorney?
So, my understanding was that we were going to bring back what's designated 20-OR-01, which includes misuse of public position, penalties, disclosure of non-public information, the expanding of the board jurisdiction to include the CRA fail three, two, bring back an item to explore whistleblower that was going to be done by the Inspector General, and then finally, a discussion, I'm sorry, that, that change that I previously referenced in disclosure of non-public information, the changing of, of the language from public official or employee in the first part of that paragraph to covered individual.
Okay.